Call the order, the city council meeting, regular meeting Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Kaylee.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Stafford?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember Darmes?
Here.
Mayor Marks?
Here, we're all here. We're going to do invocation, pledge allegiance, Milton Carrero from Volusia County Sheriff's Office.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you asking you for mercy in our souls, Lord. We are sinful and cardinal, but thank you for the righteousness of Jesus Christ we come to you today, Lord. We ask for an atmosphere that you can surround us with light and peace, Lord, with your angels, and that you can give us a good spirit with your grace and your strength. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before we get started, make sure you silence your cell phones. We got public hearing, adoption of millage rate and budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Read the opening statement. The city of Orange City intends to adopt a millage rate and budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. The rolled back rate is 6.5019 mils and the proposed millage rate is 7.2387, which represents an 11.33% increase over the roll back rate as provided by the property appraiser of Volusia County. Mr. Waters, will you read the ordinance for 693 and 694 into the record, please?
Certainly, I will go ahead and read both short titles and then we can vote separately. So the first is item number 2A, ordinance number 693, in accordance with the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, certifying the millage rate for fiscal year 2025-2026 on all taxable property located within the city of Orange City, Volusia County, Florida, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing for effective date. Now we move on to the short title for item number 2B, which is ordinance number 694, in accordance to the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, adopting the annual budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, beginning October 1st, 2025, ending September 30th, 2026, authorizing subsequent amendments by resolution, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Devlin Moore?
Good evening, Devlin Moore, Finance Director. Tonight is the final public hearing for the millage rate and budget for fiscal year 2025-26. This hearing is being held accordance with Florida statute, chapter 200. This hearing was advertised in the Daytona Beach News Journal on Friday, September 19th. Nothing has changed since the first public hearing on September 10th. I'm going to just recap what we've done with the millage rate thus far. On July, excuse me, on July 22nd, the city council set the proposed millage rate at 7.8 mils, which represented an increase of 19.96% over the roll back rate of 6.5019. The roll back rate is considered the revenue neutral rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as the prior year excluding the revenues coming in from new construction. Then on September 10th, city council set the tentative millage rate at 7.2387, which represents that 11.33% increase over the roll back rate. This slide depicts the millage rate that's been adopted by council over the last 10 years. The proposed millage rate is, does represent an increase of less than four tenths of a mil compared to the current rate of eight, excuse me, 6.8691. It remains lower than the rates adopted in the seven-year period between fiscal year 2016-17 and fiscal year 2023-24. The rate of 7.2387 ensures that the city continues to meet its service needs. It helps offset the rising operational costs that the city continues to incur, in part because of the inflation and the tariffs and the increased costs in providing public safety. It also augments slowing revenue growth in other areas. The proposed budget, as presented, maintains all existing service levels and programs. It ensures that recurring revenues cover recurring expenditures, which is a core principle for a sustainable municipal budget. The proposed general fund budget is balanced with a transfer in from reserves of $247,000 and it provides for three new positions in the general fund, being two police officers and a special events coordinator position. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Okay, see, and then we'll bring it back. City council discussion, any discussion on this? Okay. We will need a motion for the first ordinance, it looks like. Is that correct, Mr. Waters?
Yes, ordinance number 693.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make recognition to adopt millage ordinance number 693, setting the 2025 millage rate at 7.2387 mils, which reflects 11.33% increase over the roll back rate of 6.5019 mils, as certified by the property appraiser.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and ordinance number 693 passes. Moving on to ordinance number 694, we would need some action on that. Just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 694.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee, will you call the vote?
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and ordinance number 694 passes. Okay, I'm going to read the closing statement. The city of Orange City's millage rate for fiscal year 2025-2026 is 7.2387 mils, which is above the roll back rate of 6.5019, as provided by the property appraiser of Volusia County, and reflects an increase of 11.33% in ad valorem taxes. At this time, we will end the public hearing and resume regular meeting agenda for city council. Do I have to do that? No, okay. Okay, Christine, you had an announcement you wanted to make.
I indulge me, yes. We have a few new employees present tonight. The first employee that I'm going to introduce is Michael Hall. He is actually in purchasing. He is part of a succession planning as David Santiago's retiring and he was our only purchasing employee, so welcome, Michael. Any questions or anything else?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Some new hires for HR is Ms. Rebecca Welk.
She is replacing Jeremy Wiggins and she's hit the ground running. She's been here a little bit longer than our next introduction, which is Ms. Bernice Gonzalez. She's our deputy development services director. As you know, Joe Uez was promoted upon Becky's retiring and we now have Ms. Gonzalez filling in as our deputy.
Thank you. Want to welcome both of y'all.
All three of you.
All three of you. Anything else? Okay, number one, absences. 1A, shall the absence of Councilmember Lisa Richardson from September 10th, 2025, regular city council meeting be excused?
I'd like to make a motion that Councilmember Lisa Richardson be excused from the September 10th, 2025, regular city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Councilmember Richardson? Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and the absence of Councilmember Lisa Richardson is accepted into the record. 2A, presentations and proclamations. 2A, the VIA Orange City Women's Club presentation of Carter kits. Brenna Dom, president of the VIA Women's Club, is presenting. Want to come on up? State your name and address for the record.
I don't do these very often, but I am Brenna Dom, 460 Beaufort Avenue, Orange City, Florida. Love Florida. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us here tonight for this awesome occasion. My name is Brenna Dom and I am our VIA Orange City Women's Club President. Our club was established over 130 years ago by some of the strong, path paving, founding women of Orange City. We have created a sisterhood of service and volunteers within our community, eventually bringing Florida into the General Federation of Women's Clubs with its affiliation. We are a part of a worldwide network of volunteers with more than 63,000 members in every state, the District of Columbia, and more than a dozen countries. GFWC members work in their own communities to support the arts, preserve natural resources, advance education, promote healthy lifestyles, and encourage civic involvement, including related to domestic and sexual violence and awareness and prevention, and advocating for children. Every April, the VIA Orange City Women's Club runs a pinwells for prevention campaign to help raise awareness for abuse prevention and receive donations to benefit the children in our communities. With this event that affected our, with the events that have affected our community earlier this year, with our local law enforcement responding to some scary and tragic children and children's with special needs calls, it motivated the Women's Club to assure that our local Orange City first responders are highly equipped to handle all the children in our community. They are people appointed in our community to protect our children and it is important to have the best tools for the job. We had a goal and we exceeded it. First, our goal was to provide the Orange City Police Department with special needs kits for their patrol cars. These kits include weighted blankets, sunglasses, earmuffs, sensory toys, and more, and truly are universal tools for all children. Because of all of our wonderful donators who supported this cause, including some of our awesome council members, who, half of our council members are actually VIA Orange City Women's Club members, our private citizens and local businesses, we were able to equip all our Orange City Fire Department vehicles with these Carter's kits too. Yay! Thank you to all who supported this great cause and please reach out to inquire about all the cool things we have planned for this year and how you can be a part of it. With that said, we, the VIA Orange City Women's Club, would like to proudly present you with 23 Carter's kits for your respective departments. And here's one of them, the rest of them are in my truck.
Do you want the chief to come up so you can present it?
Yes. Who's taking pictures for me?
And for, since you said you don't do this that much for future, you should always address the council when you're at the podium.
I could hardly stand on my own two feet.
Listen, I didn't want to mess with you, I'm just telling.
We need Chief Long from the Fire Department.
Yes. And my VIA Orange City members.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Wonderful, we appreciate it very much.
Let's go, girls.
Oh, I forgot, we have to do this.
Didn't ask me to come up?
Well, unless you're a girl, you're a member.
You can try to join. We did it long ago. Better? And then everyone must shift a little this way. Shift, yeah, that way. Everybody choose that. All right, everybody look at me first. One, two, three. And now Rebecca.
Thank you.
So thank you guys so much. We're going to drop the top, we're going to drop the.
You don't want to stay for the meeting, everybody? Okay, moving on to 2B. SB 180, impact on Orange City stormwater regulations presentation. Hello, Public Services Director?
Yes. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Bilal Thikard, Public Services Director. So the actual purpose of this presentation was to talk about our stormwater regulations and any improvements, any additions we want to make to that. But I think we cannot do that unless we first talk about Senate Bill 180 and the impact of that, and that'll actually make this presentation much shorter as well. So the plan we have for this presentation is I'm going to discuss Senate Bill 180. We'll talk about our current stormwater design. Actually, John Peters has prepared a nice table for that. He'll go into the details of that and then we'll take questions. So moving forward. Senate Bill 180, okay. So Senate Bill 180, the purpose behind the bill is actually good. It is meant for, it's an emergency act, which primarily focuses on hurricane recovery and disaster relief. But it also includes provisions that limit local government, city, county governments' ability to enact any new land development regulations that are more burdensome than what we already have. So that's the problem with that. The bill was passed during the 2025 legislative session and aims to streamline the rebuilding process after hurricanes Debbie, Helene, and Milton. So all those three hurricanes. And it, it covers all the impacted area. So what is the impacted area? Impacted area is where the path of the hurricane and 100 miles around it. So if you look at all these three hurricanes, the impacted area is pretty much the entire state. So based on that, yes, it streamlines the recovery process, but it also limits what we can do for the next two years until October of 2027. Senate bill was passed in 2025 and it's now been codified into law that creates Florida statute 252 and also amends Florida statute 553. So what does the law do? What it does is, it prohibits all the cities from doing certain things. And those are implementing a moratorium on construction, reconstruction or redevelopment of any property. And this is the, B is the most important one that really applies to stormwater regulations or any land development regulations. Implementing a more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations. That's where the stormwater regulations are. Implementing a more restrictive or burdensome procedure concerning review approvals. So we cannot do that. So in sum, Orange City is legally barred from enacting more burdensome land development regulations until October of 2027. Now, if before 2027, there is another hurricane that hits within 100 miles of that, then we are barred from making any changes to our land development regulations for another year. So this could go on and on if we have hurricanes. Now, let's hope we don't have hurricanes, then we will be able to do something after October 2027. So that's the bad news. The good news is our stormwater regulations are already fairly good. We are much more restrictive than some of the other cities and county around us. So John is going to explain where, you know, where we are right now and I think we have a pretty good stormwater master plan, so I think we don't have to worry about that. With that, I'm going to pass it on to John, right here.
John Peters, Engineering Services Director. Thank you, Bilal. Zip stickers chart is important because it shows where we compare with our neighboring municipalities. On the left-hand side, you'll see it talks about stormwater regulations on the top and then floodplain regulations on the bottom part. You will notice that under Orange City, virtually everything is in green. Green means it's the most restrictive. Red means it's the least restrictive. There's some orange in there, that means it's a little better than the least restrictive, but it's still not good. And then blue is the step below the green. You will see that we are virtually green on everything with one blue. And so we are in very good shape in terms of what our regulatory process is. This is in large part due to consultants that we've had in the past, mainly Pegasus. They have helped us in the past develop stronger regulation. If you all remember, we had a whole series of storms back in the 2000s and then we had another one in the teens. So in Orange City, interestingly, we do not have an outfall in the city. We have a series of 86 closed basins. That means the water doesn't go anywhere. So typically, when you have closed basins, you have a higher standard. In part of reason, we adopted the St. John's requirement on the closed basin. It's because typically, we think of 100-year, 24-hour storm event as being a critical storm. In a closed basin under St. John's, that is a 25-year, 96-hour storm event, which actually is more volume than 100-year, 24-hour storm event. So it's more stringent and so therefore we have to do this. In fact, I'm going to give you an example. The parking lot on Holly that we've been trying to get out the door, when we were working on it, A, it's in the floodplain of Mill Lake, there's no outfall. B, we had to meet the 25-year, 96-hour requirement, not 100-year, 24. 100-year, 24, it would have been an easy project, but the 25, 96 made it impossible. So we had to go to a gravel-based parking rather than a paved parking. So that gives you an example on a city project, how our regulations, being more stringent, does have an impact in terms of what we're allowed to do in the floodplain and from a stormwater standpoint. So we were going to talk about new stormwater design criteria, but you'll see, there's no slide after. The reason being, we can't do anything. But in preparation for 2027, we will be looking at some options that we will bring back to the council. The one that I think we all need to be thinking about, if you remember, a year ago, we adopted the vulnerability assessment. We did that to help us get grants. One of the key things in that vulnerability assessment is reassessing what is a 100-year storm? What is a 25-year storm? Right now, 100-year storm is about 10.4 inches of rain in 24 hours. In Milton, we got 16.1 in 12 hours. If you look up on all the charts now, that is considered probable maximum precipitation, the worst it can be. Now, what's interesting in the vulnerability assessment is, they were saying that we really need, right now, in the next couple of years, need to redefine 100-year storm from 10.4 to about 14.3. That's 40% difference. In another 10 years, that definition should be 16, Milton. Because, you know, the flood, the stormwaters that we talk about, the statistics, when they happen more often, you know, a 100-year storm has a 1 in 100% chance of happening in a given year. Well, you know, 10.4 inches, we've had about five of them in the last 20 years. So that's no longer 100-year event. So one of the things we'll be looking hard at is redefining what volume of water is associated with the different storm event. That's something we will look at, but we can't do anything until October 2027, as Bilal rightfully said, assuming we don't get within 100 feet of, 100 miles of another storm event and then we have to add another year. So it's going to be a while before we can address it, but we're in really, really good shape compared to our brothering community. With that, opening it up for questions.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Kaylee?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Is there any citizens' comments? Last call? Okay. See, and then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. We'll call the question, Kaylee? Hold on a minute. Always forget that part. Is there any comment from the public on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll bring it back for action.
Councilmember Stafford? Councilmember Richardson? Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Moving on to 5A, ordinances at first reading. Ordinance number 695. Mr. Waters, will you read that to the record?
Certainly, this is ordinance number 695, in accordance with the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, amending chapter 2, administration of the code of ordinances of the city of Orange City, Florida, by amending article 5, investment plan, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And Madam Mayor, that was the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Devlin Moore?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Devlin Moore, Finance Director. This will probably be the first time in a long time you've heard me talk about something other than budget. So the investment plan is codified as part of the city's code of ordinances under article 5. It serves as a roadmap for managing the city's investment portfolio. It sets the priorities for investments. It spells out the type of investments that are allowable. It establishes strict standards of care. It defines internal controls and independent auditing, and it mandates transparency in reporting. Florida statute authorizes cities to adopt a written investment policy, and in fact, much of what is in the current and proposed investment policy stemmed directly from Florida statutes. Florida statute has also set the priorities for cities' investment policies as follows in this specific order: safety of principal, liquidity for operations, and reasonable yield. The city's current investment policy was last updated in 2008 during the Great Recession and at the time, the primary objective was the protection of the city's capital. So now, 17 years later, there's been many changes along with, well, many changes in market conditions, laws, and best practices, and that's what brings me here tonight. Between the existing investment policy and the proposed investment policy, the guiding principles remain the same. Again, pursuant to what is outlined in the Florida statute, the first is safety, the preservation of the principle. For every dollar that we invest, we should get at least a dollar back. Second is liquidity. This ensures that funds are available when needed for operations and capital improvements. And then yield, achieving reasonable returns or interest earnings only if safety and liquidity are achieved first. And that is what's mandated in the Florida statute. Then, as a best. Then, as a best practice, the city has added priority number four transparency, providing for clear and open reporting. Before I step into why staff is here tonight, I want to give you a recap of the city's current investment portfolio. So currently, the city has thirty-two point two million dollars invested in three local government investment pools. As of August, the rate, average rate between those three investment pools was four point four percent, which is actually a very, very good rate. And the earnings for August was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that's split between the general fund, most of which goes there, and then the utility enterprise fund, all depending on how the respective funds, how much principal that each respective funds have allocated towards those investment pools. It's important to note that last week, the feds did decrease the interest rate by twenty-five basis points or zero point two five percent. So if you take that and apply it to the four point four percent that we earned last month, reduce that by twenty-five basis points, you're looking at a drop to, from four point four to four point fifteen. And once you quantify that, that equates to about a loss of eighty-seven hundred dollars in a month in interest earnings. So as interest rates drop, so does the revenue potential. So over the last seventeen years, much has changed. The market has evolved. There are new options that are safe and secure for investing. In twenty twenty-three, the state of Florida updated its laws requiring municipalities to invest based on decisions that are fiscal and not social or political. So those changes have been incorporated into the new policy. Then the Government Finance Officers Association has issued a series of best practices that help improve the standards for internal controls, strengthening those, strengthening diversification and in reporting requirements. And lastly, we're looking to implement stricter controls to ensure clearer definitions, stronger limits, and better safeguards. And we'll go into that more here momentarily. So some of the key enhancements that you can expect to see in the proposed policy is first, stronger diversification controls. The new policy suggests that limits on how much per sector, a sector and issuer can be allocated to reduce concentration risk. So essentially, not putting all the, all the city's eggs in one basket, diversifying it. The example on the screen is the policy allows for up to fifty percent of the city's principal to be invested in corporates, and not one issuer can receive more than five percent of what is available. The policy also provides clear defined minimum rating requirements. It's actually stricter rating requirements for all applicable sectors. And then it adds some additional safe and secure options for investing, including municipals and asset-backed securities. These are all things that are authorized under Florida statute and are dependent on high credit ratings. The policy also enhances oversight. It requires that the independent auditor audit the city's investment activities. It requires staff to also look at the investment policy annually to make sure it's in line with laws and best practices. And then it requires the finance director to complete a minimum of eight hours of continuing education each year in the field of investments, just to make sure that I maintain, you know, the best knowledge possible of what's going on in the market. Again, the new policy strengthens the safeguards and controls. It really shifts from broad guidelines to detailed enforceable protections. And for instance, it requires auditors to review the city's compliance with its own policies. So that's something that's outlined. It also implements delivery versus payment rule, which means that the city would, the city would, would never pay for a security until it receives the security, and we would never release the security until we're paid for it. So it happens simultaneously. It also implements custody of assets, and that means that the securities would be held by an independent outside custodian, like a bank or a trust. So the city still owns the security, but the third party physically holds them. And what this does, it prevents anybody inside or outside of City Hall from making decisions that are not authorized. The recap, really what is old versus new in the policy. Again, it has a broader range of safe, high-credit investments that are authorized by Florida statute. And that just provides additional options as interest rates change and the market changes. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to dabble in all of the authorized investment opportunities. They're just there in case, as, in case the city gets to a point where we pull in an investment advisor and they have some, you know, abilities to maneuver the market and, you know, and bother themselves a little bit more in some of these other things. It provides a detailed diversification framework. Again, it has that explicit, explicit per-sector, per-issue or limit. And then it improves the transparency by defining what is to be included in the quarterly reports to City Council. It requires that annual review, not only by independent auditors, but by staff to look at continuously the investment policy to make sure that it's always up to date. And then it does also provide stricter requirements for retaining an investment advisor. It requires that a written agreement be brought to council and approved. It requires that the advisor be legally bound to our investment policies in Florida statute. So they have to work within the statute, or within our policy. And then it requires the investment advisor to be bonded in order to protect against fraud and embezzlement. So to recap, in the end, how does it benefit the city? Again, it preserves that safety of principle. Every dollar invested, we should at least get a dollar back. It provides for more flexibility in a changing interest rate environment. It tightens those controls and safeguard, to safeguard the public funds. It makes sure, makes sure that the city is operating within the guidelines of state law and national best practices, and it strengthens accountability and transparency. So with that, staff recommends that council approve ordinance number six nine five at first reading and to schedule the second and final reading on October fourteenth. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions with regard to that. So we are amending this, and so we, who is authorized to make decisions for the outside custody holder of our funds? Who is authorized within our city to make those changes?
Well, we currently don't have that, but that is something that would be procured and brought to City Council for final authorization.
So we don't have that at this time? We're just wanting to change that to have that happen?
Correct.
Got you. And then the independent auditor, is, we currently have one? Or we're trying to implement? Okay. Is that consistent, or do we change that up?
The council just approved their independent auditor, and I believe that they're, they're on board for five years with option of a one-five-year renewal.
So this is new to us, because it's new to me too. So it's new to us for this time?
Yeah.
Going forward?
The auditor is most likely would have looked at this. It just requires them to do so.
Got you. And then, okay, so that's the investment fi, okay. Who is the investment advisor?
We do not have an investment advisor.
Okay. So we're looking to get one?
Well, talking to folks at different conferences and the like, we really don't have the, the principle that interest in, investment advisors at this time. Really, the threshold's fifty million dollars before they consider it. You really don't have a return on investment if you bring in and you pay all the management fees and such. So until we reach that mark, we probably wouldn't consider an investment advisor. But the policy allows for it in case we get there.
Okay, so at this time, we are investing, you said, I think, three different ways. And so we are, we have chosen that as a council or as a city to do it that way?
Correct. So we are using three local government investment pools. I would say the next step would be to look at, at treasuries.
Okay. Thank you.
Something that's low maintenance because of.
And safe.
And safe, absolutely. And everything in the policy is safe.
Right. Of course. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we're looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number six nine five at first reading and schedule the second and final reading for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment? See, and then we'll bring it back for action. We'll call the question.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tjonsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and ordinance number six nine five is approved at first reading and scheduled the second and final reading for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, after proper notice. Okay, number six, public hearing ordinance is second and final reading. We have none. Seven resolutions, we have none. Moving on to eight discussions in action. Eight A, consideration of sponsorship requests for Orange City Cirrhosis Club's haunted house. Maddie McAllister.
Hi, guys. Maddie McAllister, Public Information Officer. This evening, we're presenting a sponsorship request from the Orange City Cirrhosis Club to sponsor their haunted house. This is an annual event. We do sponsor it historically every year. Previously, it would come in in a packet of four separate events. This one is the first sponsorship request we've received since we updated our sponsorship policy a couple of months ago. So the request is for their haunted house that runs select Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights for the last three weeks of October. As you can see, it is just in-kind services in the form of fee waivers totaling about a hundred and twenty-five. I believe in your agenda item, I did put a hundred and fifty. It is a hundred and twenty-five. It's going to cover their special event permit fee, which is fifty dollars, and then two sign permits, which are twenty-five dollars each. In the written agenda item, I did put three. So it is actually two. And then staff time would include curation of the newsletter to advertise their event, sharing on social media, and adding it to our sign-out here that was previously our marquee sign. It is now our digital sign. So approximately twenty-five dollars there. So that is the request. Are there any questions?
So a hundred and twenty-five total?
Instead of a hundred and fifty in your written item.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're asking for two sign permits. Why wouldn't it all fall under one for one fee and one permit? And then you list your different signs.
So that's a good question. I'm not familiar specifically with the sign permits. I believe those are under development services threshold. So I am sure our.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yeah, Joe, would you like to come on?
So I don't, I don't, Joe Ruiz, Development Services Director, for the record. So I don't, I'm not familiar with the specific proposal with this project. Quite possibly, the fifty dollars may be if there's two signs that they're proposing on one application, then to not have to do two applications. We would be looking at one, however, charging them the two signs that they're proposing. So that's the, for the fifty, that's the only thing I can really think of.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that, because I've actually sent in.
I believe in the past, oops, sorry. May I?
Yeah, I was going to say, I was talking here.
So sorry, I can wait.
I'm not familiar with this, because I've given in permits before for signs, and usually you put all the signs you want on one permit, you pay one permit fee. Go ahead.
I, I recall in the past, there was a banner sign posted at Veterans, and then their sign that they post at Ashley's. So my guess is that would be those two signs that would pay the twenty-five-dollar fee. If it was just the sign that they posted at Ashley's, that would be one fee. But if they're going to put a second one banner at Veterans, I believe that's the second twenty-five-dollar fee.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm a little on the fence with this, because usually we do one permit for signs.
Correct that for you. Would it be?
Like, for example, in the past, the farmer's market was like, okay, we want to sign on the building, and then we want to put some signs out front. You list on the permit exactly what you want for sign permits. You don't get charged twice for a permit because you're putting signs out, because you have more than one sign.
At one location. I think the difference could be two locations in this. But I can definitely get you an answer.
Yeah. Because twenty-five bucks, but twenty-five bucks, they don't have to spend if they don't have to spend it, right? So.
Yeah, and with that, if it's two locations, we're looking at two different owner authorization forms. There's just a little more review to it.
Okay, I see. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. The other question I have is, I was looking at the, the budget, and it looks like they brought in about nineteen thousand dollars before expenses, and they had about four thousand dollars of expenses. So I was trying to figure out why they would need a hundred and twenty-five dollars from the city, tax dollars, to pay for this. I'm okay with the sponsorship of advertising on, you know, social media. Let's see, I have it down here. Social media, the newsletter, the website, you know, Facebook and all that. And then there was a one thing that I looked at that was a no for me, and that was the promotion on the city's digital sign, if available, it says. And that's one thing that would be our new sign out front, I'm assuming. So tell me if I'm wrong.
Correct. Previously, it was on the marquee sign.
Okay.
And because they were afforded that, they've asked that for the LED. We do not have a current policy written that would allow it or not allow it. That's why it says if applicable, so that we could explore how we are going to use that sign. Some people argue it's no different than the marquee. I would argue we need a policy, and we don't have one today. And so that's why it says if applicable, because we want to explore a policy.
So are we going to say that's not applicable because we don't have?
You could deny. Right now, I was holding it open for, once we developed the policy, if that's something that is allowed, that we could. But if that's something that clearly the council does not want to afford, we could easily not make it an option.
Well, I wanted to open up this discussion with the council, because it wasn't just this group that asked. There's other groups that have come to me and said, can we put our advertising on the city, new city LED sign? And I think that our sign could get taken over with all the businesses in town wanting to advertise their business when really it's, I mean, right now, we have the OC Connect app, we have the city council meetings. It's really city business, and I know that we need a policy for that. We don't have it yet. But this is in this, we, we have to decide tonight, do we, if we allow one, we have to allow all?
Prince is, when we authorized stuff to be on the marquee sign, it was based on it being a city-sponsored event, and it went through the council, and council said yes. If somebody from NAPA came and said, we want to advertise on your marquee sign, we could not do that.
Right.
So you guys are still in control. It's, I agree, we do not have a written policy, and I think we need one. I think the digital sign's going to be, likely be looked at, as has, it's more flexible, more opportunity. So where the marquee was limited, once we manually put it up there, you could only get, it didn't roll. So like with this new sign, and Ms. Marks, Mayor Marks has mentioned, we have heard that there's some interest in using it, and we don't really support that, and hence why we would do the policy. But this is something we did put on the marquee sign at your discretion. So at this point, I think we need to look at the, it's happening pretty soon. So it would be nice to know if it's, if you're agreeable to putting it up, or if you think we should not. But it's definitely something that comes to you if it were to go on the marquee sign. That is not changing, and it's up to you all if you want it on the digital or not.
So keep in mind, council, if the digital sign is not static, the other one was static. So it was up there, and that's the way it was. We, we agreed to advertise and change it out. But in the digital sign, if you drive by it, you're going to catch it at a certain thing, right? So there's, I think there's two, is there three things up there?
So presently, we present the city seal for six seconds, I'm sorry, for eight seconds. And then we present all meeting advertisements for CRA, for City Council, budget hearing. Those all run for twelve seconds. And then we also have a time, temperature, date, one up for an additional twelve seconds. Sitting at the light, you get through the full playlist about two and a half times. We've tested it. May I add, if you have, so this would be not technically separate from how we advertise on Facebook. We do not accept any events. We don't promote anything on our website that is not a city-hosted or city-sponsored program or event. So in using what is now our new marquee sign, the LED sign, the thought process is we would have a basic decline and say absolutely not unless it is a city-sponsored or city-hosted event or program. In addition to that, we obviously are. In addition to that, we obviously are not advertising that right now. Um, at the next meeting, we will bring you back OC Connect signups, and we will discuss future usage of that sign, which would include this. So if we need to postpone that specific component of the request until the next meeting, we can always do that and take it back to them and say yes or no at that time.
Are they using the, um, the signs that come from Public Works, the big, what do you call those, big signs?
No. No, the mobile, um, digital sign board.
Thank you.
No, not at this time. Um, in order to do that, that was not in the initial request, but when we priced it out, it's about fifteen hundred dollars for the seven days that the event runs, and I believe we typically run that for a total of three weeks or something when the event takes place. After talking to Ashley Gay, she advised that that was never put out, and we've never put the sign, the mobile sign board out for them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council or discussion?
I'm in agreement with, uh, the interim city manager, and also, um, I just think that it would leave us open for a lot more, in the weeds, why can't I do it? I wanna do this. I'm having a, it, it just leaves it open for a lot of discussion, and I think a lot of questions. And I think if we just have a hard no.
You're just talking about the digital sign right now?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, 'cause there's a couple different components, so.
Yes.
Okay, any comment on that, council? Anybody?
I agree with Dawn.
Oh, you gotta raise your hand. Go ahead.
I agree with Dawn on that. I think, yeah, it should just be city business. Thank you.
I got you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I, um, unless I'm missing the whole thing, you're talking about just on the digital sign, and you don't wanna advertise the, um, uh, Halloween Horror Night with Cirrhosis Club?
Just on the digital sign is what we're discussing right now. There's a couple different components. That's what discussion is about right now, and then there's a couple other components in this, uh, agenda item that-
I'm talking about the digital sign right now. That's, this is where I'm at. I'm with the digital sign. And why would that be a problem? Like I said, they're not using the, the signs from the city anymore with the big, uh, and they're not doing the fence anymore, so. Well, they are doing the fence. So what's wrong with, my people pass through our beautiful city, they won't know that we have a Halloween event going on at that time.
So what's wrong with that is what we all just discussed, is that if you do it for one, you have to do it for all, and, and I think Maddie just expressed it. It has so many, uh, minutes that it goes through, it runs through, and the more people that we put in there, the less you're gonna see city business, and we're trying to connect with our residents and let them know what's going on in the city. So the sign was bought for the city to advertise city business, not necessarily-
That's what I'm understanding Maddie to say. What we do for one, we have to do for all, because I thought they could use their own discretion as to who can place things on the sign.
No, it's, it's, she's saying we're gonna bring it back for policy. Go ahead, Christine.
So, the confusion is, talking about the marquee sign versus the digital sign, there's really no difference, in our opinion, other than we think people are gonna be more excited to possibly use the city's digital sign, because it's more flexible and offers more opportunity. However, we're still governed by what is a city-sponsored or city-approved event, and whether it would go on the marquee sign or now the digital sign. So we know there's interest in the public, private, who have asked, hey, can I put my business up there? We've said no.
Right.
Under current policy and practice, if it's, if you approve this tonight, it will either be approved to in, to allow the Orange City Block Party to be advertised, or not be allowed, and basically, you're working to make that decision.
You mean the haunted house.
Oh, what did I say, block party? I apologize. Halloween, the, the Cirrhosis Club Haunted House, to either be advertised on the sign or not. And what Ms., um, Councilmember Tiamson has said she'd prefer not. We, we want to dedicate it to city business, not city-sponsored business. And, um, Mr. Grimm has chimed in and agreed with that, and now, I don't think you agree, but you haven't, I haven't heard the answer, so I'm trying to keep track.
Okay.
Um, but that's, that's what you're trying to decide tonight, is how are we gonna use the sign, at least for this agenda item, so that we can come back with a, a recommended policy, um, at a future meeting. But this came in before that could be established.
So another thing to think about also is that we have a lot of events coming up. We're hitting the season now. We have National Night Out, we have the Halloween Block Party, we have the parades, we have, um, you know, what else do we have? I know we have, right, we have a lot.
We have National Night Out, just city-hosted. We have National Night Out, we have Halloween Block Party. We move into November where we have our banner, so nothing will be on there for an event, and then beginning of December, we have Light Up, and then we also have the Holiday Lighting Contest and the Parade. Um, so, and, and just to clarify, when you're sitting at the light, if you get there, and as it's turning, it's, it's yellow turning red, you can get through about two and a half cycles. So, and that's presently where we're at, about four to five slides. If we add more, you obviously will have a longer rotation through the sign. So you may get through one and a half cycles of the sign, but you will still see the full thing. We're running it for twelve seconds each slide. The FDOT and Florida Highway, uh, Motor Vehicle Recommendation is no less than eight, so we are adhering to that. Um, we can always decrease it from twelve to eight, but standing there at the sign to see the image, read the image, and get to the next one, we recommend no less than twelve seconds. So there are adjustments that can be made if you do choose to use the sign. Um, the policy that we would adhere to is if it is not city-hosted, and it is city-sponsored, such as your cirrhosis event tonight, we would advertise that on Facebook if approved, social media, Instagram, everything like that, and our website. And if you approve the sign, that's where it would go, but we do not accept, we don't share on social media private businesses. We don't advertise that on our website. So that is not, unless council gives us direction to change that, that's our current operating procedure.
And also, when you're driving down seventeen ninety-two, not just sitting at the light, 'cause you're talking about sitting at the light at Graves. If you go down there, which, you know, I'm sure you all do a lot, um, the, it doesn't turn as fast, you know what I'm saying? So you're gonna, you're gonna catch maybe one or two messages if you're lucky, and so the more you have on there, that's less you're gonna see. So that's, I just want to point that out to, um, Councilwoman Stafford?
Yes, um, and if I'm hearing you correctly, 'cause I'm gonna continue to ask until I get an understanding, the Cirrhosis Club is a city-sponsored? Do you work hand-in-hand with Cirrhosis Club in sponsoring events in the city for the residents?
So, yes, if approved tonight, we would, as a city, be sponsoring this event. Um, the level of sponsorship and key components of what we're giving them would depend on what's approved and what they're asking for. So they're not asking for, um, any cash, 'cause we don't offer that anymore. They, we can do up to a thousand dollars in in-kind service, whether it's staff time, advertising cost, you know, whatever, fee waivers. Tonight, they're asking for the fee waivers, and they're asking for advertising privileges in the form of Facebook, social media, um, our website, and our, our message board now. Uh, so it is a city-sponsored event, I, 'cause it's not staff time, I wouldn't be out there actually working with them that closely.
Let me clarify, it's not a city-sponsored event yet, until we vote on this tonight. So as we vote on this, it could become one, and it depends on what level and how much we wanna give. Um, like I said, you know, we're talking about saving money here, right? We're talking about, we're, we're dialing back on things. It's only a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, not our money. It's, it's, it's the citizens' money, so think about that. And then also, uh, you know, with the, you know, with the advertising, it doesn't cost us anything, except for, uh, obviously, your time to go on there and advertise on social media platforms and, uh, the website, right, and things like that. And it doesn't cost us anything to put it on the digital sign. It's just, think about, you may jam up that sign. That's the only, that's the only thing I have a, a, a concern with. Councilwoman Stafford?
Madam Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but Cirrhosis Club have been with us for so long with city-sponsored events. Why all of a sudden, it's a big decline in us assisting the Cirrhosis Club with things that they would like to do in our city for our residents?
So, are you asking me that? I can give you an answer. Are you asking her? My answer to that is that, um, through the years, they've been doing this for forty-seven years in Orange City, and it's a great event. But they're also making nineteen thousand dollars, and if they can't afford a hundred and fifty dollars for a permit, I see that as a problem, number one, or a hundred and twenty-five, sorry. And, uh, so I don't think, I don't personally have any problem with supporting their event as far as advertising it and getting people there, 'cause it looks like they had, uh, one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven people come through, and they're charging, they're charging fifteen dollars an adult and six dollars for kids. What do they do with that money? They're putting it back out to the community, yes, which is a good thing. But at the end of the day, we're not in the business to, um, invest in their events, so that they can put out to the community. We're in the business to save tax dollars and fix roads and water and things like that, and so as much as I love events, I think that we've dialed back a lot, and we've taken away the, uh, the monetary, uh, monies for sponsorships, except for the school government, but we also went back to a thou- up to a thousand dollars in in-kind, um, services for anybody that applies. But I think when you look at all this paperwork that we got in our agenda item, you really need to look at it and say, do they really need it? If somebody comes to us from a nonprofit, and they're not making a lot of money, and they need some help, that's what we're here for. We're here to help them, right, to get ahead. But we can't sustain them for forty-seven years. I mean, there's gotta be a time where they just fly on their own and take care of business. Um, I don't know any funder or sponsor that will continue to sponsor for that long. That's, that's a long time. So, and I think we had this conversation about the Manatee Fest in the past, was that, you know, after so many years, and you're making a lot of money, it's time to take care of yourself and move on to, uh, you know, pay, pay what you need to pay, and you're still making tons of money. So that's, that's my, um, answer to your question.
Okay, and, and, well, I understand what your answer is, but in our fairness to the residents of Orange City, even though they're only asking for a hundred and twenty-five dollars to do this event, they give out, so the residents of Orange City, I'm talking about Orange City people now, to the residents of Orange City, they give out way more than that. A hundred and twenty-five dollars is a lot, when you're trying to help somebody.
Who do you think's buying those tickets at that, uh, haunted house? The residents of Orange City?
People from all over.
So now they're gonna pay.
People from all over.
They are all over, true.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, when I was sitting there, some from Orlando, it's people coming from all over, the land everywhere. They're coming to support that event.
Absolutely. But I'm saying that, what about our residents that are showing up to the haunted house, and they're paying admission to get in? They're paying for food when they're there, they're paying for novelties, and now we want our residents that just paid to get in and all that stuff to also pay for their permit fees, and I just think that's wrong.
Okay.
Councilwoman Knight?
Just one thing to, to think about, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. If we were to turn this down, and we have other folks come forward asking for, say, the similar type of, of thing, we're setting precedence to say no across the board, or yes across the board, and it's gotta be one or the other. We can't say no, and then somebody else come in behind them, want the same thing, and then we tell them yes. I mean, we've gotta think about that.
So one size doesn't fit all. Each event is gonna be different, and each event is gonna have a different budget. They may be a new event, like we could use the, um, the country blue, blue grass that's coming up. They're fairly a new event. They don't make this kind of money on that event. They're still trying to grow it. They're just trying to get people to come out to the event. They need a little help. So when I, when I, I'm all about consistency. I think that everybody should be equally treated equal. But when we're talking about money, we really need to look at, where's this money going? How's it being used? And, uh, 'cause we're responsible for that, right? So, and, and, and like I said, it's only a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I know that, that's not a lot of money. But, you know, we could talk about, uh, other things that we did. Every dollar counts, whether it's five dollars, five thousand dollars, or a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We're responsible up here, and so if you're okay with it, I'm just putting out my opinion, but you all, just, you know, we all decide together. And, uh, is there anybody else from the council like to speak on this, and we'll move on? Anybody?
No, I've said my piece.
Okay, well then, let's, uh, let's, uh-
I was just gonna say, we went from posting on the digital sign to now the whole thing of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so you kinda, so are, are you saying either we're gonna sponsor it at all, or not at all?
Well, I think we need to determine that. Uh, Christine, you wanna touch on that?
I don't believe we have a motion on the floor.
We don't have a motion on the floor.
In order to know, the, you know, I think the questions, if I could summarize, Maddie, did you have something to add before I?
Yes, just to touch base, you can choose to sponsor and say we wanna waive the special event permit fee. We do not wanna sponsor the rest. You can say we want the fees paid for, and we wanna gift them advertising. This is not a yes or no. This is a how do you wanna sponsor this event, if any sponsorship at all, just to clarify.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept the, the sponsorship of advertising for the Cirrhosis Club Haunted House event, and, uh, decline the hundred and twenty-five dollar sponsorship. And I would like to decline only the, the digital sign, but give them all the other advertising on the social media platforms and-
Website and newsletter.
And the newsletter, that was the other thing.
I second. You have to do the business. Motion second. There's a motion in a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kelly, we need to vo- votes on that?
Yes, there's a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second?
Public.
Oh, is there any public comment on this?
Come on up.
Loretta, come on up. What did I say?
It's okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, I threw you off there.
Hi, my name is Nareda H. Williamson, and I live at one twenty-five, um, I mean, I'm sorry, eight eleven Gunnison Drive. I don't believe in, in Halloween, but I'm willing to donate the hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Anybody else have a comment on this matter? Kaylee, you wanna take the vote?
Councilmember Knight?
No.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
No.
Councilmember Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Darms?
No.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Uh, I'm, are we voting yes or no on which? I'm so sorry.
On the motion that Kelly-
Kelly's motion stated that-
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion failed. You have to say that.
The motion failed.
Okay, we need another motion. Anybody?
You say you need another motion on the same thing?
The other motion failed, so we're looking for a new piece of action here. We don't have a decision.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
To the chair. Um, your choices are to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. So, we're looking for a motion for one of those.
Do we need to state the conditions?
Yes.
Right. That's what, right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, what if there's no motion?
She's gonna do it now.
Oh, you're gonna make a motion?
Not me. No?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, to approve the sponsorship with the condition that we do not utilize the digital sign for the city.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on this? See, and then we'll bring it back for the question.
Councilmember Tiamson?
No.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
No.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
No.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
No. And the motion fails again.
Motion fails.
Okay, council, I wanna try a different, uh-
A different approach.
Different approach here. Need another motion? So, uh, so we, so I'm just gonna recap. Currently, we had a motion that failed on taking away the monetary, or I'm sorry, the in-kind, and, uh, uh, digital sign, but putting everything else out there for advertising, that one failed. Then we went, came back for the second motion, and it was everything, we were gonna give them everything but the digital sign. And that failed, so now we need a new- And that failed, so now we need a new motion. Um, let me ask council, uh, if we do not get a motion on this, what happens?
Item dies.
Okay. And how many times do we have to do this?
There, there's no limit, it, it, if there is no motion and it just dies.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, we're gonna, uh, the item dies and we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. Okay, moving on to eight B. Discussion regarding the city's existing non-residential paint color regulations. Joe Ruiz?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, respect the members of the public, Joe Ruiz, Development Services Director. Uh, so today, staff has brought to you all a presentation for, um, discussion, essentially going over the paint regulations that are outlined in our Land Development Code, um, chapter ten, right? And so, just some, some brief background, um, just to paint you a picture, huh, I had to do that one. Um, on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, the City Council gave, uh, direction to staff to present it and bring for discussion, uh, the existing Land Development Code regulations for non-residential, uh, development. I believe at the time, the mayor, um, had, had made some observations on paint colors and things that she had seen through the seventeen ninety-two corridor. Um, and so, brought it up for council discussion and council requested that of staff to, to bring it before you all. And so, that, that is part of that, um, laying that, um, today for you all. And so, when we look at our, our current code, um, a lot of times when you see Land Development Code chapters, there is a level of applicability. What do, what does this section or what does this chapter of the Land Development Code apply to? Um, and, and so, it usually clearly outlines it. Um, and then, if there's special exceptions or exemptions from the code, um, there's also a section that gives that exemption and it also gives the rationale as to why and how to apply it, right? Uh, so that us planners don't have to guess, we can evaluate, uh, an application. Um, does this meet the threshold, does this apply? And so, we can apply that regulation if applicable. And so, the way our code reads, um, and it's, I, I provided a memo for you all with some verbatim code language and then just summed it up for you all here today on this presentation. Uh, so, all new multifamily, non-residential development and certain redevelopments that meet a certain threshold as established within chapter ten of the Land Development Code. So, to, to set the baseline, all new development, um, which is multifamily and non-residential, the paint regulations that we currently have today apply. Um, so, a new development comes in, for example, a few years ago, the, um, seven eleven came in at the corner of, um, seventeen ninety-two and Rhode Island. Um, that was considered actually a redevelopment, right? So, they tore down the old Bad Dog Pawn Shop that was there, um, cleaned that site up, did a redevelopment, um, application before staff. Um, and so, when we looked at it, it definitely was above the fifty percent of the, the building value and it affected absolutely a hundred percent of the square footage of, of that building. Um, and so, we looked at it, uh, and we did, we went to the, the site plan review application for that. And the site plan application review includes everything from the site improvements, uh, stormwater, as Bilal and John were, were talking about earlier. Um, and, and so, it, our parking regulations, um, and then it also gets into the chapter ten, uh, which, um, I believe as a planner is pretty fair. Um, when we look at architectural elevations and guidelines, I've worked for various municipalities, some that had none, like Deltona, right? Um, and others like Palm Beach Gardens that had very strict, uh, guidelines. I, I believe ours is, is fair, it, it is really fair. Um, and I think it's done us justice, you know, when you, when you go through the city and you look at our projects that are, that are fairly new, when you look at that seven eleven, I brag all the time, uh, my wife's watching tonight, right, and she knows. Um, as I'm driving down seventeen ninety-two with her, I always go, that is one darn good-looking seven eleven, isn't it? All right? Um, and so, our code, it, it does a good job at, at really regulating and creating great elevated, um, architectural styles within our city. And so, uh, that, that's that level of applicability, new multifamily developments, non-residential, and also the redevelopments, um, that qualify. And so, when those new applications come in, there is a development order that is approved for those. And we also stamp approved the, the architectural elevations, right? And so, when we stamp those approved, uh, there are details on there which show and are called out as well as the paint colors for those buildings, right? So, typically, if they, if there's a, an existing development that has a development order, um, which is the benefit of newer development, right? We can hold them to that, and if they wanna change it, well, we evaluate it and, and, and we get into the requirements of the code. Um, is it gaudy, is it dayglow, is it visually overwhelming or not? Um, and we have that leverage to be able to see, look at those projects and go, okay, you have this approval and so this is what we're comparing you to. The, what it does not apply to is existing developments, kinda older developments, right? When you, when you see buildings that perhaps were constructed in the county that annexed or city, or buildings that were in the city from many, many years ago, unless they're doing major renovations, none of those, none of these regulations for paint specifically apply, right? And so, the paint requirements in our code, the wording states, uh, one, uh, not specifically limited, but shall be consistent with generally accepted taste for architectural design, so do the colors meet the design that they're proposing. And also, gaudy, dayglow, and visually overwhelming colors are not permitted. Um, and just to kinda give you, um, just some definition for what gaudy and what dayglow are. Gaudy, uh, the definition is too bright or heavily decorated. And also, dayglow, which, I, I don't know, it's, I found it quite interesting, it says shades of orange, right, is the first color that's stated. Uh, pink, green, and yellow, which are so bright that they seem to glow. So, that's really the criteria when we look at these paint colors, really what staff is looking at. And so, ag- again, when these new developments that come in, we've done a good job at making sure that our requirements are met. Uh, we did look, or I did look at, um, other city regulations. And so, I, I did a, a comparison as to what do we have and what do other cities have. Uh, realistically speaking, um, our code compares very well to, um, say, DeBarry, the land, New Smyrna Beach. Um, the outliers are really Deltona and Palm Coast. Um, Deltona has really no architectural guidelines or paint color regulations other than what is called the old enterprise commercial overlay, right, in their historic enterprise area. Uh, there, they have more stricter requirements, however, the paint colors is not, actually not one of, one of those. Um, when we look at Palm Coast, Palm Coast actually had requirements for both single-family, um, and also for non-residential. Um, as we all know, there was a state statute a few years ago, um, that actually limited cities from, um, limiting residential, uh, single-family and two-family, um, regulations for, uh, elevations, architectural requirements, colors and things like that. Palm Coast, if I'm not mistaken, and I have a planner, um, colleague that, that works over there, uh, in the last couple of years, their, their council has seen a paint ordinance or discuss, had discussion on paint ordinance fourteen times, fourteen times.
Did you mean to say the land in Palm Coast? Cuz you said Deltona.
Yeah, the outliers are Deltona and Palm Coast, cuz Deltona really has no regulations. Palm Coast had a heavy hand on, on, on paint regulations.
Cuz I was seeing the land in Palm Coast seem to have that.
Yeah, but, well, Palm, the land has the LRV, uh, Light Reflectance Value. Um, however, it's, it's, that's, that's pretty much it. You know, you can have this LRV at, at this percentage and you can have the lower one at another percentage. Now, Palm Coast is, is very, very, they had a, an approved color palette, they had an approved, um, uh, it's like going to, to, to Lowe's or going to Sherwin-Williams and seeing their, their panels, um, and looking at all the colors. That's essentially what Palm Coast had, um, in there. So, after those fourteen discussions, possibly debates, um, input from, from residents, uh, they actually just repealed their ordinance. They've actually pulled out, um, from my, my understanding, I haven't seen the new one, but everything LRV related, light reflectors vary related, they threw it out. They took it out. Uh, made it much more, um, much more liberal or, or less restrictive, uh, for the residents and I believe for the businesses as well. Um, so, so when you look at that overall, like I said, aside from those two outliers, our, our code matches well with the other, um, municipalities. Do they have paint color regulations? Yes, however, they're limited. Uh, one of the things to note too, which others noted, is you look at planning of developments. Planning of developments, uh, we do because they're contractual agreements, right, with the city. There's a agreement that the, the city signs and the, the developer signs. Um, there's regulations that we can put in there because they're specific to that project, right? Um, and so, we have a little more leverage to work with them, to co, to have them commit to certain, um, architectural styles, architectural colors, as you see Liberty Station, right? Um, I, I believe those buildings are actually looking fairly nice. Um, and so, we, we did a good job at kinda reviewing those elevations and making sure that, um, they're quality. Um, so, staff did a corridor survey, um, through there and, um, as you can see from the presentation theme, um, it was blue and yellow, right, um, with the sunflowers and the blue paint on the back. And apparently, blue and yellow were kinda the colors that we did see throughout the seventeen ninety-two corridor. Um, so, you look here and, and in your, um, packet, there's actually addresses to these buildings. Um, I do not have them off the top of my head, um, however, we can reference them. But you can see the, the existing Bad Dog that's got the green and the, and the yellow, uh, you see the Davis Automotive. Um, you see some of the, the historic building here that has yellow. And so, when you see these colors that are a little different than, than normal, um, it is because these are older developments, right? That have not necessarily done redevelopment that meets our, our city's threshold. You see the other building to the right, which is the scooter store, I believe it's still a scooter store. Um, and then you've got, um, Knuckle Sandwiches, who has painted it blue and, and, uh, shades of yellow. And then, uh, there is the Ice Cream Fun Days. So, out of all of these that you're going to see, the only ones that met the threshold for redevelopment was the Fun Days, right? Um, they came in for a building permit, they renovated the site, they did, they did, um, upgrades to the interior. Looks very nice actually on the inside, if you haven't been there. Um, and then they, they did, uh, changes to the site, they put planners up, they, they did, they painted the building. So, this elevation and painting actually would have come through our department, came through our department, uh, through the building permitting.
That's like a pastel yellow, red yellow, right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, um, but that did go through, through our department for review. Um, I was not here when that was approved, however, it, it, it did come through and, and, and staff reviewed it. Um, another, another, uh, color that you see throughout there is the blues, and so, we have, uh, different, different shades of blue there. We got the Blue Spring Pizzeria, uh, there's a, there's a car lot there, there's the, um, repurposed, um, station there with the, the eyeglass store now, I believe. And then you've got the, the, the Dragon Vape, um, you've got the Blue Springs, and then, uh, one of the brightest ones is, I believe, that's Metiera, um, the Mexican restaurant that's there, uh, with, with very colorful, um, pop with their planners and, and their paint colors. Um, so, when you look through that corridor, a lot of these buildings, really, if, if you see them, it's gonna be the older buildings that have not met that threshold. Um, now, should they redevelop? Should they demo? Should they, um, propose anything fifty percent more of value, thirty-five percent more of the square footage? Then they absolutely have to, the, the code applies to their sites and they'd have to meet our chapter ten Land Development Code. So, staff did propose discussion and next steps. Um, as you all did hear a little earlier from Bilal and, um, John Peters, um, I've talked with our city attorney on this item as we were getting ready to, uh, prepare for discussion before you all. And there is the elephant in the room that you all heard this morning, Sen- Senate Bill one eighty, right? Senate Bill one eighty applies to comprehensive plans, which will be coming before you all soon as well, and Land Development Code regulations, right? Land Development Code, chapter ten is, falls within our Land Development Code of the Code of Ordinances. So, um, if we were to change the code, uh, we would have to verify and check and see, are we making this or proposing to make this more restrictive? Um, if we are, um, and if, if change is recommended by the council, if that's what you all desire, um, it is more restrictive than, and our attorney can, can confirm. Senate Bill one eighty would apply and we're, essentially, our hands are tied to October first, twenty twenty, uh, seven, barring, you know, hurricanes or, uh, declarations of emergency come through through that time that extend or toll that period even further. Um, and our attorney also wanted, and if, if Paul, if you wanna just chime in on that and maybe something else?
Sure, Senate Bill one eighty, it does apply, excuse me, to, um, to creating new land development codes. But there's also a provision, which I think is more applicable here, which applies, uh, to, it prohibits more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of site plans, development permits, development orders, to the extent that those are defined, uh, in statutes. So, in other words, any building permit, any kind of, uh, uh, anything that you ask for from the city, if, if it's more restrictive, it violates Senate Bill one eighty. And I think, uh, Joe said that anytime someone comes to you, you, they actually, is, is part of their building permit process is, is correct?
Correct.
Um, so, if it's not already in the code, it's more restrictive, it violates Senate Bill one eighty. You'd also have to keep in, in mind, some businesses have trademarks. And they have to have certain colors. I may, I'm, I'm just gonna pick one, maybe like a T-Mobile or a Verizon or a, you know, a Planet Fitness.
But that's not really legal advice, that's opining, wouldn't you say? You're kinda giving us your opinion.
Well, it...
So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put something in everybody's mind here, what you think, because we wanna know what the law is, right? So, and the law, basically, you're saying the law is that, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, but i- if it's, if it's, um, the state bill states that you, if it's a new development, you can't stop new development, you can't stop new, um, how did you say it? Like, in other words, if you, if you use, uh, um, Liberty Station as a, you know, you said how good it looks, that's because you made sure that it looks good and it's not gonna be a fluorescent color, right? So, um, with these current buildings that are already there, they're already there. And so, um, they're not, they're, they're not coming through the permit process, they're just painting their building. So, this would be an ordinance to say, moving forward, cuz I'm not looking for anybody to go redo their whole building after they painted it. I think that would be awful for any business to have to do it. It's already there, right, and it costs a lot of money to paint your buildings. But if we don't come out and say something now, our whole corridor and our, and our, uh, CRA is gonna look like an electric, uh, you know, what did you call it, um, glow, right?
Dayglow.
Glow. So, so the question, the legal question is, is can we, can we have this in a law to say that moving forward, if anybody wants to paint their building that's already in, in there and doesn't need a permit, could it be a law that they just have to go by certain standards, whatever the council decides? Whether it be no, uh, glow or...
Gaudy.
Yeah, or it could be just pastels, is that, is that, um, allowable?
If it's already in the Land Development Code, you can require it. If it's not already in the Land Development Code, it's a more burdensome restrictive requirement, which would violate Senate Bill one eighty.
Okay, so that's a no, we can't do it. Okay, thank you. So, and I think our Land Development Code, someone said earlier, it's, it's kinda old, so we, if we can get through this year, we may wanna update some things and that may be one of them to think about, council. Um, just because we spent all this time as a council, uh, previous council that to have these businesses take down their perfectly good signs and put up these nice, um, monument signs to make it look pretty. But now, we're having all these buildings that are doing fluorescent colors that, you know, could look like, uh, I don't know, maybe we'll be Fluorescent City instead of Orange City, right? So, it's just something that maybe moving forward and eventually it'll, it'll turn to make it look a little more, um, soothing or warmer when you're coming into city, not so, uh, loud and, um, if that makes sense, so. Okay, so it sounds like we don't really need to go any further with this because we don't wanna go against, um, the state bill.
And I would say, keep in mind too, council, when, um, people come in for redevelopments and possibly those that seek, um, facade improvement grants, you all do have the discretion of those funds and what gets approved within those grants. Um, and so, you know, at that time, you will likely see, kinda like what Lux did, right, with their roof, uh, where we limited the color of their roof. Um, so you all kinda can provide input at those times as far as what gets approved in those applications.
And that falls into redevelopment, right?
Um, yeah, with the facade improvement grants, improvement of, of existing facades.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to eight C. To authorize the staff to proceed with resolicitation of the Rhode Island Avenue-Levitt Avenue Roundabout and Adopt Budget Amendment Resolution number four zero one dash two five. Mr. Waters?
Could you read that resolution, please?
Certainly, this is Resolution number four zero one dash two five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, amending the annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five by adjusting revenue and expenses, repealing all resolution or parts of resolutions, resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing severability and providing for an effective date.
Joe Ruiz?
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, respect the members of the... All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, respect the members of the public. Joe Ruiz, Development Services Director with the City of Orange City. So as you all saw earlier in the meeting, Bernice Gonzalez, our deputy director, has started, right? With the city. So if you see me with a little bigger smile on my face, it's because I'm a little more relieved because I've got someone that I can, that, you know, I can count out for some help. So, and really realistically looking at this item, I bring her up because I've been bringing her up to speed with the roundabout discussion as far as where it started, where we are today and this presentation before you all. And so also with us today is our engineers that originally worked on the corridor safety study for the Rhode Island improvements that were, that made the suggestions of the roundabout and things like that, who looked at safety, who looked at design, preliminary design, as far as how these, how these things could work and what, what improvements could be made along that corridor with the roundabout being one of those, right? So just to kind of give you all some history, just because some of you all were not on the council when these initiatives passed and came through. And it has been a very long process, right? I was here the first time when Becky started this project, I left to Deltona. I thought the roundabout was going to be built when I got back and here we are going around and around about the same thing. So, so really back in twenty nineteen, the city essentially approved their priority list of what improvements did they want to make transportation wise throughout the city to improve traffic flows, to improve our infrastructure and just make things safer, right? And so one of the ones that ranked the highest was the Rhode Island corridor between seventeen ninety-two and Benner Memorial Parkway. So staff presented to the city council back in twenty twenty, a proposal for Teds. At the time, both Chris Walsh and Mike Hale were working for Teds. Now they've branched off and the city also has them on continuing services, which institutional knowledge is great because I was able to call on them and say, hey, can you, can you show up in case any questions arise? So they, they did work on this study. And so back in twenty twenty, staff presented it to city council and said, here are the results of the study. And a roundabout is one of the options that came up. Staff during that time also did stakeholder meetings with the adjacent property owners that this roundabout was going to affect. They did stakeholder meetings with the jail site. Gino Evans was one of the owners of, essentially he was the owner, I think, of both the northeast and the northwest portion of that time. And I remember sitting in this room and Gino going, mama don't sell, right? I'm not going to give any land, I'm not going to sell any land. Well, I don't know what Becky did, but Becky was darn good at her job and mama sold, right? Mama sold. And she got, she got, she was able to get the city two corner clips, right? From, from the Gino Evans and the Jelp Corporation, essentially to, for that northwest and northeast corner of the site. So back in twenty twenty, the city council authorized staff to pursue design of the roundabout for the fact that it was in fact the cheaper option. When we look at roundabouts and these gentlemen could probably speak better than I can, there is a maintenance savings cost when you look at roundabouts because you're not looking at signal equipment that has to be maintained over the years. When you look at signals, there's turn lanes usually that are also applied to that. So there's turn lane maintenance that all goes into, to that. So there's, there's just more to think about and more to care for essentially with a mast arm traffic signal. So the council decided and said, let's move forward a roundabout. They hired AFCON, unfortunately Mike Kearns was, was not able to make it, who was one of the designers, but they hired AFCON. And as you can see, that was back in twenty twenty, right? City staff has gone back and forth and I want to say we've had, and I had a little portion of that. David's been involved, our procurement specialist, John Peters has been involved, McDalia, who was a big advocate for free money, was involved in that. And so many staff hours, I want to say hundreds and hundreds of staff hours, we've got hundreds of emails back and forth with FDOT. And so last year, we finally got to a place, right? Where FDOT felt comfortable to say, here's the lap agreement, right? Here's the lap agreement. How did that start? Back in, I want to say it was twenty twenty-two, TPO advocated, they did a call for, for projects. The city put in for the project with TPO. TPO is kind of our, the avenue we've got to go through to get funding for, through the state. And that got approved for the funding at one point three million dollars, right? One point three million dollars. And so staff went through design, went through approvals, FDOT and staff of the city council essentially approved the lap agreement on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So you will see some highlighted and some changes, I apologize, I didn't mention that at the beginning. There was some reordering of the timelines that we had to do, so staff provided you an old one with the cross out version and also a highlighted one with the changes. So staff got that presented and, and city manager presented that to the city council for the, for the lap agreement. She was authorized to sign that lap agreement back in May of twenty twenty-four, where you all approved resolution number three twenty-one twenty-four. Since then, there was some plan tweaking that was required, changes to the plans. FDOT has a very rigid review process and they have different departments that review it. And so when you think you're green to go, you know, you might get a stop because another department has touched it and seen it and now they want to tweak things based on their requirements and, and things like that. So finally, finally in May of this year, staff received a notice to proceed from FDOT. So the notice to proceed essentially allows us to send it out, go out for bid and see what bids come in. And then if all requirements are met, if all the funding is there, then we can present it to you all for the award of the contract and the roundabout will go, right, underway. That kind of, that kind of, there was a wrench in there. So staff did the, the letting out for bids, bids came back, we received six. Turns out that we received six of them and all six were over budget, right? All six came under over budget. So what happened, we had a meeting with FDOT and FDOT in that conversation really suggested heavily that we look at the, the cost of the project, updated cost because the ELPC or the engineer's cost estimate was a little outdated. And so when we did that, the project went from about one point five million to one point seven million, right? And they wanted to see that evaluation. Also, they told us, when you go out for bid, we would prefer that you do pre-qualified contractors, right? FDOT pre-qualified contractors. Why? There's a lot of paperwork through FDOT, there's a lot of standards, this is public funds, right? And there's a lot of requirements that they need to meet through the state as a state contractor. And so it's easier when you've got people that are pre-qualified to the state to do that. And so at the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five council meeting, Mrs. Arantin brought it all before you, where you all had some requests to staff, right? She asked for direction before we presented this item to you all. And part of that direction that was required or that was requested was that we look into the updated cost and that we also see if there's additional available funding through TPO. I've reached out to TPO, I've been to some of the TCC meetings. I'm still waiting on an update from, from TPO on whether we can get additional fundings. What staff is doing today and presenting to you all is worst case scenario, should we not get any funds at all? These are the amounts that we will need to make this project happen. If TPO decides to give us more funding, which they have some ability to do that, then obviously that number comes down as far as our cost. Another item that was asked of us was to provide you all and look at the crash numbers for, for the time periods, right? So when we look at crash numbers back from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, when it was just a two-way stop, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, right? It was north and southbound where the stops and Rhode Island was a through, right? Rhode Island was a throughway. And so in that area and looking at crash numbers, there were eighteen reported crashes from that timeframe with one fatality. When you talk about FDOT standards, fatalities are unacceptable, right? Fatalities unacceptable and so are incapacitating or incapacitating injuries. So that was really what helped us qualify also for this lap funded amount, right? Of one point, one point three million. When we looked at it and we compared from March twenty twenty-one to May twenty twenty-five, which is when essentially March, March of twenty twenty-one was when the four-way stop went up. You would think four-way stop, everybody's stopping, no accidents, right? That would be the ideal scenario. In fact, Chief provided numbers for crashes within that timeframe and there were ten reported crashes, three of which were non-incapacitating injuries. The crashes were classified as, five were re-earned crashes. One was due to someone running the stop sign, one was failing to use do care, another one was a side swipe and also another person was just in the right of way, obstructing right of way. So when we look at this, I don't know that there's any traffic design that'll ever stop any accidents, right? Humans drive, right? And humans make mistakes and sometimes we can be careless, especially on the road. And so when we look at roundabouts, roundabouts are typically safer scenarios, right? You don't have the head-on collisions, you typically have side swipes type, type crashes and things like that, which is one of the benefits of the roundabouts and they rank very high on FDOT for that purpose, right? Because of their safety and again, we have experts here that can, that can talk on that. But essentially that is one of the biggest pluses of a roundabout, right? We, we look at the scenario of Rhode Island, as a planner, we, we plan long-term, right? We, we know there's the, beyond the ultimate improvements that are anticipated at Rhode Island and I four, which at minimum involve an overpass, right? Involve an overpass from Deltona so that Normandy-Rhode Island connection would come over to us. A lot of, a lot of, from what I recall back in the day, a lot of the backup was between seventeen ninety-two and VMP on Rhode Island and that backup. If we put a signal there, right? People still stop and they've got to wait and things like that. But if you put a roundabout, the idea was because of the industrial area and, and the trucks having to take time to launch, right, from when they, when, when the light goes green, part of that was they can circulate well because of the radiuses once it's, if it's designed correctly. And also the trucks would roll, right? They continue to go, people can go in the direction, you pick which outlet you're using and traffic continues to flow, right? And so when you anticipate that traffic coming over from Deltona, that's only going to further complicate that depending on the design that's there, right? If we kept what was there today or if we were to build a signal. So having that roundabout kind of keeps traffic flow moving from all the way from Normandy, essentially all the way to seventeen ninety-two. So, so when we look at, when we look at those aspects of everything and everything involved, when you, when you look at staff time, when you look at right-of-way acquisitions, when you look at how long, you know, we've really been anticipating and working on this, just from a, from a staff perspective, I think it's a really, really good idea to say, you know, we've got one point three million that the state has given us to do this project. And when we look at the transportation impact fee funds, we do have the funds available to say, you know, now that the project has gone up, so both the construction costs have gone up and since COVID, you know, when you look at signals, signals are more expensive. You know, you also, you also consider the cost for construction and engineering inspections. That was one of the biggest blows that we faced, back in the day, it was in the hundred to a hundred thousand range. We got a quote about a year ago, it went up to two hundred and seventy thousand for construction and engineering inspections. And then I most recently, once Becky retired, asked our consultant for another quote, just because it was a while and they came back with almost three hundred and some thousand dollars. So we, we looked at it and we said, well, we don't have the funds for this. And so that was part of the conversation that Dale was starting back in July. And so to not bore you anymore, staff is here for any questions. Both of our engineers are here for any questions, but staff does request that you all authorize staff to proceed to resolicit this project for bids as well as budget amendment for the five hundred and thirty thousand in transportation impact fee funds.
Any questions from the council? Councilwoman Darms?
I live right by that intersection, so I'm by it all the time. From the get-go, in fact, I was going to ask at a meeting, what's the status with this? Because I hadn't heard anything in a while. As a result of that, and I, I personally like the flashing stop signs. I think it has worked really well ninety-nine percent of the time. I have seen rigs coming up to make the turn to go down the other side of Levitt. You can tell it's, it's really bad. And I'm thinking, how the heck is this going to be any easier if there's a roundabout there? And I recall when this was first brought up a couple of years, I don't know if I was on the, on the council then yet, but they said, oh, it would be a million dollars to put a, a light up.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, so what do we have, thirteen, one million, three hundred thousand now to do this roundabout? The other thing I have a question about is, wasn't there talk about widening Rhode Island in order to be able to accommodate that? And now, like you said, I know for a fact that the guy that owns the dump there, yeah.
Used to own, he sold it. He actually sold it too.
Oh, really? Well, I know his mother. I knew his mother owned that property where they built the, the storage for boats and all of that. And so I'm thinking, when that was put in there, if they have to widen that, that's taking away from them as well. I just, it just, it doesn't even seem fathomable. And one of my questions was going to be, what has the statistics been with accidents since the flashing lights went on the stop signs?
That's in your agenda.
Yeah, I know, so I'm not a fan of it and because I live so near there and I'm waiting for my turn to make the turn. And I'll say this, I used to go down Lake Monroe all the time, all the time to get to seventeen ninety-two. I stopped it as soon as they put their eight million roundabouts on that road because they're ridiculous. And you can see the other people driving are kind of like also hesitant. I just, I personally, and because I live there, I don't see it. So I'm not a fan of this, haven't been from the get-go and I still am not.
If I, if I may just respond, so part of the, the property, you're saying that they would have to take property from them, from them. They actually gave us a corner clip, so we do have right-of-way that they've, that we acquired from them that they've given us. From some of the other aspects, Mike or Chris, I don't know if maybe you want to talk? Chris, I know you had run some numbers today as to what a signal would look like and I'll, I'll kind of, I'll share the number if anything. But it's costs since the original study have doubled. And so Chris confirmed, since COVID, those, those have, have gone up. And I want to say, I calculated probably two point five million dollars worth of, for, for a traffic signal.
Good evening, Chris Walsh with Walsh Traffic out of DeBarry. Yes, just like, when we had the study done back in twenty twenty, by way of example, there's a, the mast arm, one of the mast arms we're looking at was what we call dual mast arm. And that cost estimated was about seventy thousand dollars. Well, DOT, they actually advertise, or put out their historical costs as of recent, you know, every twelve months. And so the cost for that same mast arm now is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, by way of example. So that, that's one of the items. Regarding the stop, the always stop sign, I mean, one of the items about it is the shelf life of an always stop intersection is not nearly as good or the capacity is not nearly what a roundabout or a signalized intersection would be. So that's, that's one thing, I think the always stop sign was put in there really as an intra-measure because of the crash problem they're having, recognizing that to get a signal or roundabout in was going to take some time.
Thank you, I do remember that. I have a question about the actual roundabout though, because a lot of people have asked me that question and maybe you all. It just looks like such a small area to have a roundabout. Like, how are these big trucks going to make that turn? And is it going to be one lane or two lanes going around?
It's a single lane roundabout, one lane, which, which is an easier thing to navigate certainly. But I think, I believe this one has a mountable island, I believe. Yeah, so, so you know, you have some ones that have larger footprints, this one they intentionally, and there was a special vehicle that was talked about to accommodate that where, basically the vehicle will need to wait for the kind of the roundabout to clear out and their trailer actually can mount over the island, so therefore they can make that turn. I mean, it's a very good point. I mean, making a right turn at a roundabout for, for trucks is, is very challenging. So the smaller the footprint, you have to allow that island to be mountable.
Right.
And so that's what they did for the design.
Because they're already going around, like when they make those turns on Levitt, they're already going on the corners, they're tearing our corners up now.
Sure.
So that's, that was one of the concerns is how are those trucks going to make that circle? I like that it's a single one because like the one in Deland at forty-four, no.
Orange Camp.
Orange Camp, that one's a nightmare. If you said that's what we're going to have, I would be, I would be so against it. And I, and I've been against it the whole time because I just, I'm not a fan of them. But after hearing the facts over the last how many years with the beyond the ultimate and that the traffic's going to get thicker on. and that the, the traffic's gonna get thicker on Rhode Island, it's already, you're already sitting at those stop signs for a long time, waiting to get through. Um, so reality is, is the traffic's coming to Orange City, whether we want it or not, we need to keep it moving. Um, um, Councilwoman Tiamson is on TPO, so I'm sure she's heard all that, cause she goes to all those meetings. But, and also, um, with the crashes, when I looked at the report, it looks like, it says, uh, I guess there were seven that were, uh, seven that were pretty bad out of the ten for the most recent for twenty-one to twenty-five. Um, no fatalities, but pretty serious is what it looks like from this report that we got in our agenda item. So, um, you know, obviously we want our citizens to be safe, we want the traffic to keep moving. I keep having these visuals in my head of, you know, you see it on YouTube and all where the cars are going up in the air in the middle of the, the roundabout. You know, you think of that, but I think, um, if it's a single lane and everybody's following each other, it wouldn't be that bad. My concern is the trucks, like I said. Um, I wasn't a fan also because this roundabout literally is right down the street from where Councilwoman Darms lives, which is fifty-five and older. Their response times are not as quick, no offense. But, um, you know, there's a lot of seniors in there and so it scared a lot of them to, to have that there.
They don't want it.
I know they don't want it, I've heard it, but, so, you know. Um, I guess what I'm trying to say isn't, I don't really want it either, but we have to think about how we're gonna keep the traffic moving and the trucks, because it's, it's, it's pretty much, is it a truck route? It is a truck, yes. Yeah, yeah, it's a truck route, so. Yeah, so it's a truck route, so we gotta keep the semis moving, we gotta keep the people moving. And I think, um, if I remember, you said to me before, that I'm not gonna go that way then. Just like you don't go Sanford that way with all those roundabouts and I get that. Um, but I'm gonna say that I'm on board with it now only because of the, the beyond the ultimate and the future, cause we have to plan for the future. Um, you know, we may not be here when this traffic all comes, you never know. But, uh, we need to be good stewards now so that they don't go, oh, that council way back should've done this and should've done that. We don't wanna be that council, we wanna plan ahead and so that's, that's my take on it. Anybody else have a comment? Uh, Councilwoman Knight?
Did I understand correctly that at some point Rhode Island's going to be widened?
So, uh, Rhode Island right now is a one-way, each-way. Um, part of the, the safety study did, and Chris correct me if I'm wrong, I think there were some improvements, um, to, to, to add turn lanes and things like that, um, to add almost a third lane along Rhode Island. Um, so right now, we don't have the right-of-way to, to expand Rhode Island. Um, as projects redeveloped, there, there's a, there's a, a section of, of land between Thorpe, um, and I wanna say Levitt, um, that essentially is picked in, in pieces, there's little parcels here and there. Um, if, if someone were to come with a master development in that area, we can probably try to acquire some right-of-way for expansion of Rhode Island and things like that. Um, but right now, um, we don't, I, I don't believe, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have right-of-way along Rhode Island for that widening. So this roundabout will, will kinda help that situation, um, you know, until future time where we can do expansion and widening.
I was just worried because if, if it's something that's, it probably don't happen for, in my lifetime, but if they did expand it, you know, what the cost would be to take that from a single lane up to a double lane? So I was just thinking ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilwoman Darms?
Um, I recently, um, I have a friend that recently had an accident in a roundabout. She was going the way she was supposed to, but she was hit by a young man who was not paying attention and she just had her car repaired. The front, uh, fender, the, was gone and all of that, so he, there's safety and not safety depending on any mo- you know, uh, motive you're gonna go for. So, and I just re- and I wish I had kept it. I just looked up somewhere recently, to put a light there, you could get one a lot cheaper. They're coming up with different types of, of, uh, I, I don't know what to say, equipment to, to, it doesn't have to be what we already have all over the place. And I think they're trying to make them more affordable. So, I don't know, my, my feeling is can we do the research on that and see what, you know, cause this is five years ago already that this has all been started. So maybe, you know, maybe we ought to look into what changes there may have been.
Um, I, I think our, our engineer here mentioned that kinda those cost, um, expenses that have gone up since COVID. Uh, one, one thing to kinda just consider as well is, uh, we have been approved for lap funding for a roundabout. Um, that was ranked, that was accepted by FDOT, it's been programmed, they've got the, they've assigned the funds for a roundabout. If we were to change to a signal, that would change, um, the programming completely. Uh, cause they would have to go through full review, staff would have to, or the city would have to essentially assign funding for design of that new, uh, traffic signal, cause it's different than the roundabout. Um, and then we would have to likely go through F, uh, CPO again for funding and, and consideration and ranking from, uh, FDOT. So if we did change the program, um, there, there would likely be consequences, um, to doing all that. And it's been a six-year initiative at this point and, um, I plan on being here for a long time. Um, but I really, I don't know that I wanna necessarily work on that.
I wanna work on that the whole time. Hey, Councilwoman Ti- Tiamson?
So that was, that was my question, I was gonna ask you, um, if we had scrapped that, we would be starting from scratch. All those hours lost, all that funding would be then rescinded because they're not gonna give us the lap funding for a light. They've already given it to us for the roundabout. They may give us more money for the roundabout, which we don't know yet, but we're hoping. Otherwise, we have to make up the shortfall, which I understand that things have cost more. With regard to accidents, I was sitting at one of the stoplights and watched someone run, stop sign, sorry, sitting at one of the four-way stop signs and watched someone run the stop sign going one way and hit the other guy that had their right-of-way. So i- 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 if anything a roundabout does, yes, it will avoid, people who don't wanna drive in the roundabouts won't go that way. And people who are driving that way, they're, they are uncomfortable with that driving pattern, so they are more cautious. They are more, you know, they are taking the time to look and be a little bit more observant. And plus, they're not just gonna blow right through that, i- it forces them to slow down.
Correct.
So that, that's, that's just my take on it, but as far as the funding is concerned, yeah, I mean, we, we have the one point three that we can move forward with and we just now need to bring it back to get more, um, get contractors and then advertise for the bid, right? Yeah. Anybody else from the council?
Okay, I just wanna reiterate what you said, uh, Joe, that, you know, number one, well, first of all, there's crashes on roundabouts, stop signs, mast arms, there's always gonna be crashes, unfortunately. We don't want that, but that's just the way it is, cause we have some crazy drivers out there, right? Where they don't pay attention or they're on their cellphone. Um, the other thing is, is like you said, the lap agreement, I'm just gonna, I wanna say that it's real important. We, we've paid for design already, we got the lap agreement coming in. Um, we, you know, we have our, uh, five hundred and thirty thousand for the, uh, the impact fees, transportation impact fees. This has been planned out since twenty twenty. Like I said, I wasn't an advocate of it in the beginning, but I am now because we're so far down the road with it. We would just be doing a disjustice to, to, to not do this now because the money is there and it's waiting for us and we don't have to pay a couple million dollars to put lights in or anything like that. And, uh, and also, like Joe said, we might get some more money from TPO, so, um, and that would just be even sweeter for everybody and less burden on the taxpayers. So, um, I'm in favor of, uh, moving forward with it. If, uh, anybody would like to make a motion, um, what they think?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation to authorize staff to advertise to the project for bid, restricting submission by FDOT pre-qualified contractors only and approve resolution number four oh one dash twenty-five, which includes a concurrent budget amendment appropriating an additional five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to cover the funding shortfall and allow construction of the LIP project to proceed. With that being said, before we get a second, at what point do we ask TPO for additional funding or have we already breached that?
Yep, I've already, uh, spoken with Colleen Nicolin, um, with the move, which I'm, I'm, I'm sure Dawn, you're familiar with the move that they've done.
Yes.
Uh, she, her hands have been kinda full and she's been a little busy. Uh, so every meeting that I've seen her, the last two meetings, I've approached her and I'm like, hey, Colleen, don't, don't mean to be, be that guy. Um, but she did say she was gonna try to get to my email and confirm, um, how much funding she would be able to, to allocate in addition.
Okay, good.
And, and you said that you wanted to recommend that, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on this? Seeing them, we'll bring it back for action. Kaylee?
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
No.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and, uh, let's see here. We're gonna authorize the staff to proceed with the resolicitation of the Rhode Island Avenue-Levitt Avenue Roundabout and adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number four oh one dash two-five. Passes. Okay, we're moving on to eight D, consideration of rescheduling and/or canceling upcoming city council meetings. Kaylee Burleson, City Clerk.
Hi. Good evening, Kaylee Burleson, City Clerk. Like how close this thing has to be. Sorry. All right, so there are a couple of meetings that we need to talk about coming up here shortly. Um, so your November eleventh meeting is actually, it falls on Veterans Day. Um, and city offices will be closed that day in observance of the holiday. Um, in light of this, we're asking if council wants to consider rescheduling the November eleventh meeting to Wednesday, November twelfth. And then we were also looking at the November, the second meeting in November and the second meeting in December. Um, the second meeting in November falls on November twenty-fifth. And the second meeting in December is going to fall on December twenty-third. Historically, council has canceled these meetings, um, but you do have the option to reschedule, cancel, keep them however you prefer. Um, so we just wanted to bring this item to you and ask for direction.
Councilwoman Stafford? Did you have a discussion?
Oh, yes, um, just a comment, uh, with the recommendation of the staff for the twelfth and the council, the last two meetings in November and December. Because like you said, people are away and, you know, I don't wanna get an unexcused tardiness.
Yes. The second meeting in November and December, that would fall the week of Thanksgiving and the week of the Christmas holidays. Um, that is why we are bringing it to you, we know a number of you do travel during those times, so we just wanted to.
November eleventh is Veterans Day, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, like you said, historically, we've moved it to the, the next day, which worked out pretty well if you're all available. And then the, the two meeting, the meeting in November, which is Thanksgiving week and Christmas week, um, we've historically taken off, cause everybody's usually away or with their families. Um, and the agendas are usually kind of light, if I remember correctly. So, um, if everybody's in favor of that, we would just need a motion to, um, for that action.
Yep, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, provide direction on the following. Reschedule the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five city coun- city council meeting to November twelfth of twenty twenty-five and to cancel the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five and December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five city council meetings.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on this? We got a quiet audience.
I believe Rebecca's going to call it for me.
Okay, hold on, ma'am, um.
Just letting you know.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Commissioner Stafford, or Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
And Mayor Marks?
Yes, and approval of consideration of the rescheduling the, those dates above.
And I will update your calendars.
Sorry?
I will update your calendars.
Bless you. Okay. Moving on to eight E, establishment of a charter review committee. Mr. Waters, will you read the title of the resolution number three nine seven dash two-five into the record, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, this is resolution number three ninety-seven dash twenty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, providing for the establishment of a charter review advisory committee, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Kaylee Burleson.
Hi, Kaylee Burleson, City Clerk. Um, okay, so at the August twenty-sixth meeting, Mayor Marks proposed, um, a potential charter review under new business. The last charter amendment was completed in two thousand and twelve. Um, periodic review does ensure that the charter remains up to date, stays consistent with state and federal laws and that it stays reflective of the community's needs. Um, we are kind of running a short timeframe if we wanted to potentially submit some changes to be put on the ballot in November. Um, that would have to be submitted to the supervisor of elections by August eighteenth at the very latest to get it on the November ballot. Um, and that would be for the general election on November third. Um, we would recommend, meaning Paul and myself would recommend, um, that the city council serve as the charter review committee. We could potentially schedule the charter review committee meetings from five-thirty to six-thirty before a regularly scheduled council meeting. Um, we can also heavily advertise for public participation, um, as well for every meeting. And then, um, that would ensure that we wouldn't waste any time between an application process and everything, because that does take time to collect the applications, vet them, and then ultimately interview and select. Um, but due to the short timeframe, that would be our recommendation. And we don't, it would be up to you all, um, what days you, if you chose to go this route. It would be up to you all if you wanted to schedule the meetings prior to a regularly scheduled council meeting or if you wish to have them on different days. Um, but we would propose at least one monthly meeting before a regularly scheduled council meeting. Any questions?
So just to clarify, can I, just to clarify, so then once a month meet prior to the council meeting? And it's a closed meeting for just the?
No, it is one hundred percent a public meeting, um, so it would be advertised, it would be published, um, like we do our regular agendas and then it would be advertised the same, so.
Thank you.
I think it's important to ha- to have public input, you know? I think, I think it's a good idea that we be the committee, um, because we obviously are up here making the, the, the policies and things. So, but I think it's important that the public's input is there too, to let us know if they see any changes. Um, it's also important to say, uh, Kaylee, you said, this charter has not been updated since two thousand and twelve. It's well past that, so it's time to take a look at it, make sure that we're updated with the times. And, um, you know, that's, the charters are, are, uh, are bylaws basically. So what we follow and I think it's important that we take a look at it. Um, if we do it once a month as proposed here, keep in mind that we just canceled one of them in November and December, so there would probably only be one meeting in each, in November, one meeting in December, right?
Yes, and we are, I mean, what we've proposed is just one meeting prior to one of the two council meetings a month. It's completely up to you all, if you guys choose to take this route, how often you wanna meet or when you would like to meet. It doesn't have to be a city council day, um, we can definitely explore other options. Um, just to give you a little more insight, because I know it sounds like August is, you know, pretty far away. However, you all will have to adopt a resolution with these changes, which is going to require the two, two readings, legal advertisement and everything prior to submitting these questions for the ballot to the supervisor of elections. And that will need to be done, um, started pretty early. We would need to start our first reading by July fourteenth. So we do have a shorter timeframe than what it kind of seems like when you add in the adoption of the ordinance and stuff as well.
So that's what I wanted to, to ask, is do we think we can actually get through that charter by that time? You, only doing one hour?
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it every month for how many months?
Um, we propose beginning in October, um, and ending in June.
Nine months, so that's, uh, nine meetings.
Nine hours.
And our charter isn't that large, to be honest with you.
And you could also, sorry.
Go ahead.
You could also, I mean, you can schedule more meetings. Um, so you can set the presidents as like one meeting a month for the first four months and then if you feel like you all need more time, we can do two meetings a month.
Yeah, we can call a special meeting too, if we needed to, if we get to the end and we're just not there yet.
I just know how we are, we all tend to get into lively discussions. I just know how we are, we all tend to get into lively discussions sometimes about things, so I just wanna make sure that we have that time.
To be fair, the, the charter is not too far off. I mean, it's, it's a good, sound charter, it's just, it may need some minor amendments just to go, to, to be updated with what we're doing now. Um, and then, there's, there's gonna be some questions in there that we will discuss another time of whether you wanna change that or not. So, it shouldn't, I think it should be enough time to do it. It is, but like you said, we have to do the different readings and all that, so that's why we gotta start now if we're gonna get it on to, uh, and it's gonna be, to be clear, it's gonna be November twenty twenty-six, not November right around the corner. So, you know, we have time to get to that election time where it all will have to go on the ballot. Anybody else have a comment? No?
I will say that if the charter review committee does get to June, and say you don't have consensus on, you know, adopted changes and whatnot, there is an option to hold a special election for charter amendments. And then there's also an option that you can push it to the next election. Um, so you do have other options as well. Um, I, like Mayor Marks had mentioned, I do believe that the, you all will be able to get through the amendments that you would like to make on the charter.
But at least we have options.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tiamson?
Yeah, and so at, even at worst, we could have a, maybe a workshop.
One hundred percent, yeah, you definitely can.
Okay, we're just looking for action, and if everybody's good, no more discussion, we'll close discussion and looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to establish a charter review committee, four zero two dash four zero five. Right?
Read this.
Yeah. Thanks. Uh, charter review advisory committee by adopting the resolution three nine seven dash two five and approved the proposed timeline for the committee's formation, meetings, and subsequent ordinance adoption process leading to placement of charter amendments on the November third, twenty twenty-six ballot.
Do you have a second? Yeah, okay, a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Do, about the charter review? Okay, we'll bring it back for action. Rebecca?
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
And Mayor Marks?
Yes, and resolution number three nine seven dash two five, um, the charter committee adoption has been approved to, uh, the proposed timeline for the committee's formation, meetings, and subsequent ordinance adoption process leading to placement of charter amendments on November third, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so now I have a follow-up question. When would the charter review committee like to meet?
What do you mean, the first month?
Would you like it to be the first meeting of, the first city council meeting, the second city council meeting of the month? It's completely up to you all, and if you were okay with the five-thirty to six-thirty?
I would say if we're, sorry, if we are canceling November and December, I would say the first Mondays or the first council meetings of the month.
Yeah, that's what...
That makes sense.
That's what I was gonna say.
Is that the consensus of everybody? And we're still good with the five-thirty to six-thirty?
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Well, we have food, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Just kidding, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to nine, report, city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Christine Davis, interim city manager. So I have a few items, um, to go over. If you recall, we had a couple, um, public, um, comments last meeting. I'd like to follow up. I spoke with Mrs. Krogowski successfully on Monday. We went over her concerns about, um, the stuff that pertained to the city. There were a few items that were outside of our jurisdiction, and she's gonna go to the county and, and possibly seek some input. But what I was able to share with her are, is the infrastructure that's currently being installed by, uh, associated with that, um, housing, or the low-income, um, housing in that area, is, while it's not in the city's jurisdiction, we don't permit it, it is Orange City, uh, service area for our utilities. So, at the end, the developer is paying for that infrastructure to be put in, and at the end, it will convert to and be, uh, over to the cities and become our asset. And we are supervising and inspecting as that's being installed. She seemed happy to know that. I also met with Mr. Bradley on Friday from Secure Storage. He had a number of issues from, uh, the stormwater fee going up. Totally understood, once we went over the budget and the fact that we adopted a new stormwater plan, added three personnel for the year, um, and along with equipment. He seemed to, to totally understand that. He also talked about the rising cost of our, our Adlorm. He, we were, he's, when he left the meeting, we had gone over stormwater, solid waste, and the budget millage. And I believe he was as happy as he could be. He did thank me at the end. He took some information about our stormwater program, very knowledgeable. He has other buildings and other jurisdictions. Um, so that helped our conversation. Uh, staff did attend watch fire training for the LED on the eighteenth, that was completed. On the... Nine eighteen, I was, I couldn't read my own notes. On nine eighteen, we had the pre-bid for the Lansdowne sidewalk. That netted us thirteen contractors that showed up for that mandatory pre-bid. We anticipate a number of proposals from different contractors for that project. That, the bid opening is scheduled for, uh, October ninth, as long as there's no need to extend it for some reason. We don't foresee that today, so we should be bringing back to you fairly shortly a recommended award for that project. I did mention to Vice Mayor Grimm that I am playing a little bit of phone tag with Matthew Scott with Highlands Electric to explore the possibility of the city looking at adding electrical vehicles to our fleet. The initial roof repair for the slate tile that had fallen has been completed. That, that particular item is closed. The contractor came back out, placed it, did not have to do any other repair but to place it. I have since received some photos and some concerns through, uh, Councilmember Knight that we're gonna, that staff and engineering will look at and see if there's something that, uh, needs to be brought back. So I'll report back on that later. Another item is our Bullock parties coming up on the twenty-fifth, and I was told that unfortunately this year, the Berry scheduled at the same night. So, our, our, we don't know what our attendance will be. We think it'll be favorable, because it's such a good event each year. We, after our last meeting at, uh, on the tenth, on, at the staff meeting on the eleventh, some concerns came up about chamber security and the lack thereof compared to other jurisdictions. We have cha- made some immediate changes regarding that security, and we're gonna continue to evaluate what options are, might be out there. And as needed, we'll, we'll come back to council if, if there's something we can do, and we might need your approval with some funding. So just know that, that is something that was a staff concern, and then later I learned that it wasn't only a staff concern. And we, we are, we are taking some measures. I wanna thank you for the adoption of the budget, uh, for those listening at home. I know we have some staff who follow us. And I, I, we, I want, behalf of myself and our, our entire staff, thank you for that budget. It's gonna help us to be successful in everything we do. We thank you for the cost of living for both general and our unions, much, much needed and appreciated. We thank you for the funding for the salary survey that we're gonna be able to do. Each year, our unions get to negotiate and keep up with the market. It's now time to look at our staffing and what the market is doing for our general employees. And by approving the budget, that's in there, and, and we will be getting started on that. Tomorrow, we do anticipate, um, releasing the job postings for the new positions as many as possible. Um, we have three in stormwater and three in general fund, so just know we're, we're rapidly working on issuing those. The last thing is a little complicated and a little lengthy, so... Through Councilmember Richardson, we have a, a, a company called Allied LLC who's reached out to us. They offer a service that will take and look at our current claims as they are in relation to Hurricane Milton. Hurricane Milton, we had both insurance claims and we have FEMA claims. They, uh, offer a service that can look at those claims to see if we're leaving any money on the table. And if we are, they can help recover or increase the amount that we stand to get either through insurance or from FEMA. It's a tight timeline, because the deadline in order for the city to secure with our insurance that we may need to evaluate what, what our claim is, is a deadline according to, um, I'm drawing a blank on his name, it's not Chip, that's a new, Mark Glover. According to Mr. Glover, we have until the tenth to notify our insurance. Well, we don't have a contract with this company, we don't have anything that would authorize me today to work with them. They are not paid a consultation fee. They actually recover their, they get paid based on the additional money that we stand to get today. Anything above that, that they help us recover, they get a percentage. It ranges from fifteen to twenty-two percent. I think it's a viable option to look at. I don't think that our claims are as catastrophic, that will be profitable for this company. I asked him, are you familiar with what our law says? He is not. Our first step, though, that I need approval, or I, I need you all to acknowledge, is for our attorney, Mr. Waters, to work with this gentleman's attorney firm, Merlin, I believe is the name, to draft the letter that I would then sign, that would be sent to our insurance to let them know we're invoking this right to take a closer look at our claims. That would allow us time for the allied firm to come in, take a look at our claims, and see if they think there's anything they can help us with regarding either insurance or FEMA. I have to caution you, I'm a, I'm fairly practical. If this insurance, if this company can help us get more money, it's a benefit to our taxpayers. But there's also unintended consequences. And those unintended consequences are, the larger our claims are with our insurance, the larger our renewals are likely in future years. Coupled with renewal, will we be renewed, will we be dropped? I don't think that that's a threat, I think that that's a, a cause and effect. So, I think we need to explore, I don't see any harm in writing the letter that would give us the time to look at that, the options, and then allow us time to figure out if we are gonna pursue this, how do we procure it legally? And what, what do I need to bring back to council, uh, in order to do so? So if I, if, if I can get a little head nod, is that sufficient, attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you're just asking for direction, so...
I'm asking for permission for our legal to draft a letter with a pro bono outside attorney that would then go to our PRM insurance representative, letting them know that we are looking to invoke a right to extend our review period for our claims. And then from there, I'd come back at some point. So I, just before I write and pen this letter, I want to see that you all are in agreeance that, you know, I can do so.
Uh, I see no, no loss in that. It, like she said, if, if he can get us more money and he gets a percentage of that, that's money we didn't have to start with, so...
Right, I just do have one question with regard to that. So, I'm assuming that this allied LLC and this Merlin that you mentioned...
Merlin's the attorney firm, I believe he mentioned. Allied is Mr. Mark Glover, I believe, if I'm pronouncing...
Right, and they're the ones that want to review our current claims to see if we've left any money on the table. That's not something that our current attorney group can see, because it's a different expertise, is that correct?
Well, allied is not an attorney firm.
No, but the Merlin is.
I think, uh, Madam Mayor, may I speak? Um, I think Merlin represents, I'll call it a subrogation group, so... Um, you know, we, we could do that, but we don't really specialize in subrogation-type claims. And I think you'd be better served with a company that does that and only that.
That was my question, okay. And then, um, like you said, if we do go back and leave money on the table and we are, uh, for lack of a better term, nickel and dime-ing the insurance company and saying, well, we want this additional X amount of dollars. We could have to shop for a new policy or our rates could...
It's a concern, as a, I, I just know...
But I agree with...
It's eleven months in, and now I'm gonna come back and tell you, I need this, this, and this.
Yeah.
This allied is gonna come in and look at what we didn't notice. Um, I'll give you an example that I discussed, and that is, within the la- within thirty, sixty, and ninety days after the storm, we, you know, evaluated this building, what needed to be fixed. In the last three months, it was brought to our attention that we're missing some tiles on our roof. So, the question staff had was, was this hurricane-related or not? We've had some horrific storms since Milton, but this firm says they're gonna bring in the, the experts that are gonna come in and analyze that roof and tell me, and our insurance, yes, this is Milton, no, it isn't. And then from there, if it's deemed that it was hurricane-related, then we would stand to get X number of dollars for this added to the claim. I would say, if I was on the insurance side, and why eleven months later are you, are you finding this? And it was an honest thing that we noticed in the last three months and said, is that a missing tile? Or a missing, you know, so we did evaluate the building in the, in the following days and did not document any missing shingles. Um, so, it's just, I think it's something to explore, but I don't know that it's, it's, it's definitely, it brings me a little concern. However, if there is valid stuff that they find, I would, I'd be interested to, to know.
Right, and then finally, with regard to that, um, if we do utilize this, um, company to review, obviously, we would have a contract with them, so we aren't, by the way, we're gonna give you this little bill.
Oh, no, we, we, yeah, we'd have to have a con- that's why I need the time...
But that comes back to us.
Between now and that tenth date that he provided?
Yeah.
We have no meetings. So that's forced my hand to say, do we write the letter to our, to our insurance?
Okay.
Otherwise, we miss, and we would just say, you know, this would be a company that maybe after a storm, we look to, you know, do we have a contract in place to utilize them? I've been offered this service from a Sanford company, but not for hurricanes. It was for our everyday claims, when we, uh, a car gets totaled out in a pursuit. If the insurance offered me twelve thousand for that car replacement, am I leaving four thousand dollars on the table, because I really should've gotten eighteen? We do look at what they're offering, we do do comps, but at the end of the day, we're not experts.
Right.
These companies that do this, they have experts that can then help that representation for us and fill that gap. So, I was familiar, this was very narrow. It's insurance for, you know, catastrophic. Um, they call themselves a loss, um, large loss consultant. So they're not looking for our everyday fifty thousand dollar car that might get damaged. They're looking at those catastrophics, roads. They may be able to help us if we get into a bind with FEMA, and we are seeing a little conflict with FEMA right now in wanting us to produce stuff that's just not done. We know our construction's not done. So by us not being at that point to give them actual, they do a process where they say what they think the value is, substantially different than what...
Sure.
What we're actually gonna pay. So, there could be a benefit here, and I think at this point, I need the permission to write the letter to, uh, extend, uh, the, the, the period with our insurance that we could bring claims pertaining to it.
So to be clear, this is just a letter, it's not a contract yet?
Correct, no contract.
So it's just to get the ball rolling and then it'll come back?
Yes.
Okay, so you just need a head nod then?
Head nod, I'm be good, I'm comfortable with a head nod.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that completes my report. Do we have any questions?
I just have one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you have the stats on the digital sign? I don't know if you're the right person to ask that.
Wait, Maddie briefly mentioned it.
Yeah.
So when the sign went live?
Yeah.
We only did the meeting dates and the OC Connect. The reporting period on that is fixed. It's a thirty-day period and it doesn't roll over. So once it rolls over, we'll capture, and we'll be bringing it back on the fourteenth meeting for you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay, sorry. Okay, moving on to city clerk reports.
I don't have much, but I would like to let you all know that Rebecca is taking a opportunity of growth, um, and she will be leaving the city of Orange City, and her last day is going to be October third. So, and as you can see, um, you all are aware of Erin, so she's here learning the ropes as well. So, um, normally she is knee-deep in business tax receipts, um, which she still is, because those are due by September thirtieth. Um, so yes, but unfortunately, we will be losing Rebecca, and I just wanted to make you all aware, so... That's all I have.
We'll miss you.
Yeah. I wish you luck, but we will miss you.
Absolutely.
Wish we didn't have to give you up like that.
Yeah.
Um, Erin does a good job too. Erin does a good job, too. I'm just saying, you know, we, we went a while with just one person in the clerk's office, and it was rough, and then you all came in and kinda, you know, held it together and got it back to somewhat normal, right? I mean, I don't wanna say normal because you all have a lot going on in there, but.
Yeah, clerks offices don't normally have business tax receipts in them, so that adds a whole other layer of work in our office, and that is a full-time job within itself. So even though Erin's title is executive assistant, that's not really what she does. She's considered a business tax receipt clerk, and that is her main function that unfortunately takes basically all of her hours away, especially during renewal season, but. I'm gonna miss Rebecca a lot. It's a hard one for me to accept, for sure, but we'll make it. We'll make it through.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Any questions for the clerk?
Nope, I'd like to say thank you to Rebecca, though, and I understand that you're gonna have a promotion, so congratulations. Wish you luck.
Okay, we're gonna move on to city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Not a lot to report, but one thing I'd like to say is one of the first things that you asked of our firm is charter review. So I'm thrilled that I was able to work with the clerk and we were to come up with a schedule, or she ate, she came up with a great schedule, and I'm thrilled that's up and running. Also like to remind you that we have a flat fee, so you are not billed for calling us. So anytime you need us, please, and this goes for division directors, staff, whoever, please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call us.
Any questions for the attorney? I just have a comment. I want to say thank you for working with us.
Yeah.
The charter review's gonna be a bit of a bear, I know that, but also just, you know, supporting us up here and jumping right in, so thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to new business. Any new business? I'll be the one. Okay, I would like to ask the council if we could prepare a plan to put some signs up at the parks, on the fences, maybe at the pavilions for the OC Connect as another addition to our digital sign, maybe, you know how they put banners out at Veteran, Veterans Memorial? Maybe put a banner out there so when the traffic goes by, they see it. And it's just an idea, maybe stuff like that, if we could bring it back as a discussion. We can't discuss it tonight, but if we could bring it back to talk about that, to take our next step in communication with the residents. Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so that's all I have for new business. Approval minutes, we didn't have any, I believe?
Those were on consent.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right. I get confused because sometimes they're on the consent and sometimes there's none. Okay, council ma, council and mayor's comments? Councilwoman Darms?
Yeah, I just wanted to express that last week, because I had the opportunity to, and because when I ran, I ran on responsible growth. Anybody who knows me knows that's what I, I ran on. So the opportunity came up to go to a planning commission session. It was an all-day session out in Daytona, and I'm very grateful that I went. There's a lot of great information from beginning to end and ended with a bunch of attorneys that also provided information. So I would recommend in the future, because it's over now, it was a whole week thing, but I only went to one. And it was very reasonable. I didn't have to spend five thousand dollars to go or anything like that. But there was so much information. I mean, I can't even remember. I've, I've got a thing of notes like that big to know that the planning commission relies on a lot of information that we don't get, and it's an important thing to consider for next year, is that when this planning commission week comes up, maybe it's something we ought to consider going to, because there's a lot to learn, a lot. And when we hear, you know, information about this being built or that, or the consideration of this being built or that, and we know about stormwater, it's, it's very helpful, and they did mention stormwater, so I'm grateful that I went.
Very good. Anything else? No?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? No?
Yes, I, I would like to thank our city staff. I had a resident who lost her house to a fire. And she was ever so grateful for the, for the support that the staff showed her. When a lot of agencies she went to try to get assistance for, they turned her around. But when she came to the city of Orange City and what the staff did for her, I can only appreciate them for it. You all are very competent. You know how to entertain our, our residents. You show genuine concern for our residents, and I just wanna thank you. I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart. I want the staff to know, Fire Department, Ronnie, you right on it. I really appreciate it. Chief, thank you. Thank you. Development, everyone with the city of Orange City. Intermanager, clerk, everyone, thank you so much because what you showed that lady is that we care. Here in the city of Orange City, we genuine care. You don't have to have a million dollars. You just need to be a resident of Orange City, and the support that you're gonna receive from the city of Orange City is beyond belief. And once again, I cannot thank you enough. And one thing she wants you all to know, because I was telling her about how tight our budget was. I told her we got a real tight budget. We had to cut out a lot of staff appreciation luncheons and all this and all that because of the budget. And she said she don't have much, but she will get with our city clerk and our city manager to see how she can give you all an appreciation lunch here at the city hall, to show her that you really, really are appreciated.
That's nice. Very nice. Councilwoman Knight? No? Vice Mayor, you got anything?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, first, I wanna thank the staff for going through another budget year because I know it's very painful. And I'm kinda glad myself it's over with, so thank you. And I wanted to, we had asked the, the city clerk about the audiobook for the Roberts Rules of Order, and she had sent us an email back, so I started listening to the audiobook of the one in brief, and it's really helpful. It, it's like fourteen ninety-nine, and you can, you can listen to it at your own time. So I've gotten through some of it, but not all of it, but I think it's good if we could all brush up on that. And it gives you examples, real life examples. It's a hands-on kind of thing instead of reading that thick book that you got when you got on the council. That's very overwhelming. And if you don't have a lot of time in your day, it's hard to get through that big, thick book, so, you know, you can listen to this on your own time. The other thing I wanted to say is at the National Night Out coming up, we're gonna debut our orange mascot. We're gonna go out to the public on social media and try to see what, we're gonna name that mascot, right? But you'll see it that night, so people can take pictures with the orange, and we have a Parks and Rec person that's gonna be taking care of that for us. And let's see, I wanna thank all the council members for putting together the video for tomorrow. Tomorrow is the State of the City address at John Knox Village at seven thirty AM till nine thirty AM. And I'm real proud to say that we all had a partners together. And so on the video, you're gonna see what Orange City has accomplished in the last year with our council and our community and what we see ahead of things that we wanna do. And so it shows that we have worked as a team, which I'm real proud to say, and shows that we've all put an interest in different subjects in the city, whether it be stormwater, roads, and so forth. So if you come to the State of the City, you'll see that video. And then Maddie, our PIO, I think she left, she's gonna put it out on social media after that so that if anybody doesn't come to the State of the City in Orange City, they can see it on social media after that. So it'll keep playing, and that will in turn educate our residents on what we're doing here and where your taxpayer money is going. The other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to give Maddie a shout out for that video because I know she worked really hard on it. And I'm, I'm, I'm super impressed at what she did. I'm sure you guys are too, or girls. And she also has on the OC Connect app that you can go on there now, and the interactive map is on there now. I don't know if you realize that. And you can go on there, and if, if a resident wants to see who your council member is, you can go on the OC Connect app now and go under that, put in your address, and it'll pop up who your council member is. So if you need assistance, you can, you know who your council member is now, and I think that's wonderful. So I wanted to give her a shout out for that also. The other thing is, is we had the food drop that was sponsored by the city and the county last week, and I just wanted to give you some stats on, you know, how it went. It was put on with all the Publixes on the west side. There was over eleven stores there with all their associates. And it looks like we had people come from Orange City, Deland, Deltona, Lake Helen, Eustis, Osteen, DeLeon Springs, Sanford, Geneva, Paisley, and Apopka. So they came from everywhere to the drop, and there was six hundred, no, I'm sorry, there was two hundred and thirty-six families total. One thousand eighteen individuals, and three hundred and sixty-five of those people were kids. So that's people that didn't have food, and their trunks were full with food for a couple of weeks. So, and that was with the help of Second Harvest Food Bank also. On November seventeenth, I'll be talking to the Mayor's Alliance Group that's worldwide, and I'm gonna speak about hunger on there and how cities can get involved in helping their cities feed their residents so that other cities will do the same thing. So I think that's pretty important, too. And then lastly, I just wanna say, you know, I'll be out of town next week, so you're it, Vice Mayor. And just need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Meeting adjourned.